Would the meeting please come to order? The time is 4:27 PM. This is the Irvine City Council regular meeting of October 28, 2025. At this time, I'd like to turn to our city clerk and have him indicate how people who wish to participate in the meeting tonight can do so electronically.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of our audience who wish to speak may submit their name into one of the speaker kiosks next to the city clerk or in the main lobby. We also offer the ability to provide live comments via Zoom and submit written comments through our e-comment system. For those who wish to participate virtually, visit zoom.us using any web browser or the Zoom app on smartphones or tablets and enter meeting ID 1600434844. The passcode is 272906. You may also dial in by calling 669-254-5252 or 669-216-1590 and entering the same meeting ID and passcode. Those who wish to provide comments via Zoom are asked to enter the speaker queue by raising their hand electronically. The city clerk will call your name and allow you to unmute your microphone at the appropriate time. Those dialing in by telephone will be identified by the last three digits of their telephone number. We ask that you please state your name for the record. The time limits per speaker are noted in the posted agenda and are established based on the number of requests submitted. All requests submitted after the first speaker is called shall receive 90 seconds. Those who wish to provide written comments may do so by clicking "e-comment" on the City Council meeting agenda webpage at cityofirvine.org/ictv. All comments will be provided to the City Council as part of the meeting record and will be uploaded to the city's website. For technical assistance with Zoom before or during the meeting, please call 949-724-6078. For any other questions or assistance, please contact the city clerk's office at 949-724-6205 or via email at clerk@cityofirvine.org. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. At this time, I'd like to ask you to please call the roll.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Go.
Here.
Councilmember Lou.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez-Franco.
Here.
Councilmember Triceder.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mai.
Here.
And Mayor Agron.
Here. Before we go to closed session, I'd like to first turn to our city manager and ask if there are any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda.
Yes, Mayor, there are two deletions to announce. Item 5.3 is being pulled from the agenda due to costs being paid. Item 5.4 is being pulled from the agenda at the request of Councilman Triceder.
Thank you. That makes for a considerably lighter agenda this afternoon and evening. announcement of additions and deletions, we turn now to closed session. I'd like to invite our city attorney to please describe the nature of the closed session tonight and the items specifically that we'll be considering in closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two items on for closed session consideration this afternoon. The first is a conference with legal counsel concerning existing litigation. This is under Government Code Section 54956.91. The title of the case is Jeffrey Gu versus City of Irvine. This is in the United States District Court for the Central District of California. The case number is 82025CV02134VBFMAA. The second item on for closed session consideration is a public employee performance evaluation under Government Code Section 54957. This is for the city clerk, and that's all.
Thank you. Before we move to closed session, we have to turn to our city clerk once again and ask, are there any requests for public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one request in person.
Excellent.
If I could call forward Susan Sayer.
Welcome, Ms. Sayer.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Susan Sayer. I'm a longtime Irvine resident, and I've known Carl Peterson for many years now. I know that Carl's performance evaluation is made by Irvine council members and city staff, but I want an opportunity to present you with my city clerk's performance evaluation. Carl has wonderful people skills that he uses to support members of the public both during city meetings and in conducting city business, which he performs always with a smile and a supportive attitude. He has always been available to forward comments and letters that I write city council members and staff, and he's always answered my questions, explained city policies, and has directed me to appropriate city staff members for consultation. I'm asking you not only to give Carl Peterson a rave review, but also to consider giving him a raise for, in my opinion, he certainly deserves one. I thank you, Carl, for your ongoing support, which you always provide with an apparent, heartfelt, welcoming smile. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
And that is all, Mayor.
With those comments completed, it's now time to recess to closed session. Mr. City Manager, do you anticipate that we would be back somewhere between 5:00 and 5:15?
I think both of these items are going to be very quick.
All right. Let's pledge to return certainly no later than 5:15. We're now reconvening the city council, having been in closed session. The time is 5:20 PM. At this time, I'd like to turn to our city attorney and have him tell us if there was any reportable action in our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. There was no reportable action this afternoon.
At this time, in just a moment, I'd like to have the audience rise, if you're able, or remain seated if that's not possible, for the Pledge of Allegiance. And those who rise, please stay standing as we will move right into our invocation part of the meeting tonight. With that, I'll turn to Councilmember Mike Carroll to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, if you would. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce 25-year-old Special Olympics athlete Alana Monga. And as part of the Special Olympics program, Alana has competed in swimming and bowling for the last seven years. She also participates in the Special Olympics Global Messenger Program, which provides opportunities for athlete leaders to engage their communities and share their personal experiences. In addition to her participation in Special Olympics, Alana also recently participated in the Irvine Police Department's Tip a Cop event. And having also participated in choir, both in junior high and high school, Alana is here to perform the National Anthem as part of tonight's invocation. So we thank you, Alana, for joining us this evening. Please come forward, and let's give her a round of applause.
(Singing) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
We're going to come down for a mo—
(inaudible)
No, Alana, stay here, if you would. We're going to come down for a photograph, and we want to invite your family forward to join us if they'd like, all right? Would my council colleagues like to join as well? That was lovely. All right. Just getting my papers organized here. So next, we move on to employee recognition. That is items 2.1. That is 2.1 on tonight's agenda. I have to call for public comment on the presentation tonight. By the way, 2.2, for those who came, will be the Southern Open Space Trail. Are there any public comments on presentations tonight?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. There being none, we'll get about the business of—
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. There were two people that popped up as I said that on Zoom.
Two people are now in. All right. Why don't we go ahead and take those public comments first? You know, there was another housekeeping matter I'd actually like to take care of right now that I skipped over. Mr. City Manager, could you repeat the announcement you made earlier about additions or deletions to tonight's agenda in case somebody's waiting for something that has been removed from the agenda? Go right ahead.
Yes, Mayor. In relation to additions and deletions, we have two deletions tonight from the agenda. First, item 5.3 has been removed as the costs have been paid, so no need to take that one. And then item 5.4 has been pulled at the request of Councilman Triceder.
Could you announce what those items were in case people at home aren't relating to that?
Item 5.3 is a confirmation of unpaid cost incurred by the city to abate public nuisance conditions at 1851 Kettering Street. Item 5.4 is adoption of the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan.
Thank you. I'll come down now for the employee recognition.
Mr. Mayor, did you want me to take public comments now, or did you want to wait until—
I'm sorry. What is that?
There's two requests to speak in the queue.
Oh, yes. Let's take the public comments first. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Jeremy. Jeremy, you may unmute your mic.
Yeah, hi there. Jeremy Ficarola. I just want to comment on, I think it's 2.2, the open space memo with regard to the prospect of a trail being linked from somewhere around Los Olivos all the way to, you know, potentially Barber's Lake, which is Laguna Wilderness area. I want to thank Councilmember Mike Carroll for kind of picking this up. I know this was talked about a couple of years ago, and personally, as a hiking enthusiast, I was really excited about it, and then it kind of just disappeared off the radar. And so I'm just excited to see this get picked up again because I think there's, you know, as we have the Gateway Reserve, we have the Jeffrey Open Space Trail, and the pedestrian bridge over the five, all these connectors are coming together pretty nicely, except there's one connector which sort of stops at around Quail Hill area, or you could even say Los Olivos, kind of that general area. For hikers and bikers, it sort of stops, and then you have the 133, and then you have the Laguna Wilderness Nature Area, then it could go into Crystal Cove and get to the ocean. So it's a mountains-to-sea route that is now missing that one final link to go from mountain to sea. And so I'm just really excited about this project, and I'm really interested to see what the presentation will show. So again, I want to thank Councilmember Carroll for picking this up. Thank you.
Our next speaker is DC. DC, you may unmute your mic.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Daniel Campos. I'm a longtime resident of Irvine, and it's my honor to talk to you today. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm sharing my support for Pitts County's so there's museum and its upcoming move to the Red Park, and I want to also—
Mr. Campos, excuse me. We are not on that item. We are on presentation items 2.1 and 2.2. You'll have an opportunity to speak later on that item as part of the consent calendar.
Apologies.
Thank you. And that is all, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, I'll come down, and we'll move on to the presentations to our wonderful employees. This is always a very, very enjoyable part of council meetings for me, and I think for my colleagues as well, when we have a chance to honor those longtime-serving employees who have, in a very real sense, helped build this city, build it not only in terms of its roads, its buildings, its facilities, but build it in terms of service to the community. We have, in my judgment, the most outstanding municipal workforce in the United States of America, and you're going to meet just a few of them tonight who are being recognized. So we have employee recognition for employees who have served us for 20, 25, and 30 years of service. Our first presentation this evening includes the recognition of four of our employees for 20, as I say, 20, 25, and 30 years of service. At this time, it's my pleasure to recognize Senior Equipment Mechanic Jeffrey Fredrickson for 20 years of dedicated public service to the city of Irvine. Before I ask Jeffrey to come forward, I'd like to share a brief video highlighting his accomplishments, at least some of them.
Jeff Fredrickson has worked for the city for 20 years. He's currently a senior heavy equipment technician for Fleet Services. He works on all the heavy equipment that Fleet Services owns and operates and maintains them and keeps them up and running for all the facilities, all the streets, all the projects that are going on on a daily basis. So he's responsible for the cleanliness of the city, the operations of the city, and the safety of all the streets throughout the city. One of Jeff's best qualities is his ability to mentor other employees, pass on his years of experience, his extensive knowledge, and his love of fleet maintenance. Jeff's ability to troubleshoot any issue and resolve it with ease is an amazing aspect of him. I've worked with Jeff for 15 years, and it's felt more like a lifelong friendship than it has been working with a colleague. His dry and subtle humor brings levity to every day, and I find myself going over to his workplace to relieve stress and have a good laugh. Congratulations, Jeff, on 20 years of service. Your humor, humility, and excellence is really appreciated on a daily basis.
So now it's my pleasure to introduce and call forward Jeffrey Fredrickson. Please come forward. Congratulations for 20 years of service to the city of Irvine, and thank you for all you do and what you've done for our community. By the way, do you have family or friends?
(inaudible)
Well, why don't they come forward and join you, too? I may need a little help with this. We're going to present to you our certificate of recognition. There you go. And also this handy weapon, as well as paperwork, for 20 years of service.
Thank you.
All right. Should we take a picture here?
We're going to get centered right here. Right here. And my colleague will be behind. Can you get it all in front of you?
(inaudible)
Well, if they come down, they'll be coming down four different cars.
I can try to see.
(laughing)
All right. You want to hold up your—
Here, I'll hold it.
Perfect. All right. You don't think someone wants you in between? Okay. Thank you.
Now, next, it's my pleasure to recognize Senior Planner Sherman Jones for 20 years of dedicated public service to the city of Irvine. Also, you know, sometimes people wonder why Irvine looks so great as a city and operates so well and seems to be so well-planned. It's because of people who are not only in our planning department, but throughout our city workforce, who make it that way. It doesn't happen by accident. It happens because of dedicated public servants. So before I ask Sherman to come forward, I'd like to share, again, a brief video highlighting his many accomplishments.
Sherman Jones has served the city of Irvine for 20 years, both as an associate planner and a senior planner. Sherman's best qualities as a city employee are his dedication to the organization, his knowledge of his profession, and his overall enthusiasm. My favorite memory of Sherman would have to be spending, I believe it was 10 days in China. We were on a Chamber of Commerce trip together, and that is where we really bonded. But I think a lot of behind-the-scenes is his family. And, you know, as I mentioned, our families are really close, his wife, Cornisha, and his two girls, Kalen and Cora, they're biggest part of his life. And just seeing him be that great husband, be that great father figure, I think that's an even greater accomplishment. I would say one of Sherman's greatest contributions to the city of Irvine would have been his participation in a voter registration video.
I register to vote.
After Sherman's voter registration video aired, I had heard from the Orange County Registrar of Voters that voter registration skyrocketed, and it was the highest they'd ever seen. Congratulations, Sherman, on 20 years with the city of Irvine. I am so proud of everything that you've done in your career, and here's to many more successful years.
Congratulations. Why don't you come forward and bring your family or friends with you? Wonderful. I'm going to present this certificate and this. Thank you. And we're going to take a picture. We'll all be famous, all right? Here we go.
You want to be in the middle? There we go. All right, hold on.
All right, there we go. One, two, and three.
Do you want to say anything? Well, I'm saying here. There we go. We have time on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Who wants to give a speech?
No. I was just—thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just want to thank the city of Irvine for giving me the opportunity to be here for 20 years, and it's been, you know, a pleasure to serve the residents, and I'm—I don't know if my wife is ready for this, but I'm looking forward to the next 20 years of serving the city. Thanks again.
Sounds great. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. It's now my pleasure to recognize Assistant Chief of Police Noel Smiley for 25 years of dedicated public service to the city of Irvine. Again, before asking Noel and her family, friends as well to come forward, we want to show her the video that's been prepared highlighting her accomplishments over these years. Go right ahead.
So Assistant Chief Smiley started her career with the Irvine Police Department back in 2000. She lateraled actually over to the Irvine Police Department from the Los Angeles Police Department after serving about three, four years over there. Throughout her career, she's had many opportunities to work a variety of different assignments that have helped her promote throughout the ranks and currently serves as our Assistant Chief. There are many reasons why I love working with Noel. You know, for us, obviously, in our positions as chief and assistant chief, we get to deal with a lot of things. And when it comes to running a public safety organization, a lot of the things that we deal with are actually very heavy. But to be able to have a partner that you can count on, that you can trust. And at the end of the day, we have fun. We're doing it together, you know? Running an organization as reputable as Irvine PD is not an easy task. But having someone that's there, that is connected, that is able to balance things out, you know, especially within an organization and amongst us. We see things differently and I think that's the perfect formula to be able to run a healthy organization. And Noel is definitely that person. Many of Noel's years in law enforcement were in the Investigations Bureau. She worked as a crimes against persons detective. And I saw that firsthand on how compassionate she was and how caring she was when she worked with victims. And not just to bring those responsible for these crimes to justice, but also ensuring that they have all the resources and care needed in order for them to be able to take the next step forward. The other part that truly stands out about Noel is also her care and compassion internally with our folks. About 12 years ago, Noel was the pioneer in being able to start our peer support program, one of the first agencies, first few agencies in Orange County and definitely in the Southern California area. And we have a very robust and healthy wellness program that's in place today as a result of Noel's efforts. Assistant Chief Smiley, congratulations on an amazing 25 years at Irvine PD and serving this great community we call home. Thank you for all that you do and more importantly, thank you for your friendship. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Noel, come on forward, please. Thank you so much from all of us for your wonderful years of service here. Would you like to say something before we present this and take a picture?
No, sir. I promise you, there are no speeches, no speeches.
Okay, how about family, friends?
My work family is here specifically.
All right, we're all present and accounted for. Here we go. All right, our final recognition tonight will be for Program Specialist Cherie Lind, who for 30 years has dedicated her work, her public service to the city of Irvine. And we have, of course, a video that highlights her accomplishments. And if we could show that now, we'd all appreciate it.
Cherie Lind has been with the city of Irvine for the last 30 years and she's worked a variety of specialty assignments. She's worked in the DARE unit. She's also been in investigations. She's been in the crime prevention program and currently she served as a program specialist in our community outreach unit. One of Cherie's best qualities is that she prioritizes her family. And she also makes it a priority for her to connect with the community and have that community engagement. She really is an ambassador for the Irvine Police Department and the city of Irvine. She's always willing to take on any task. She's definitely a perfectionist, someone that wants to make sure that no matter what event it is, whether it's the annual Irvine PD Open House, whether it's shop with a cop, or some other crime prevention, community engagement type meeting, she always has to make sure that everything is absolutely perfect. And I appreciate that about her. She doesn't allow stress to be noticeable, but deep down inside, she really is an extremely hard worker. If I was a resident of Irvine, I would like to thank Cherie for countless years of service, making the Neighborhood Watch Program such a success. If you think of safety in Irvine, really, it started out with crime prevention. In crime prevention, Cherie would meet with all of the stakeholders and the communities and the villages of Irvine. And just really looking at all the needs, the concerns, and making sure that everyone's voice was heard and the needs of the community were met. Congratulations, Cherie, on 30 years of service with the city of Irvine.
Cherie, would you like to come forward? Bring your, bring your family, friends? We don't charge anymore. All right, here we are. Congratulations. All right. That wonderful employee recognition period of our meeting is now concluded. And that allows us to turn to the second presentation. I'm going to have the clerk identify that item by subject in case people are losing track at home.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 2.2 is a presentation on the Southern Open Space Trail.
Excellent. We have outstanding city staff and guests here. Would you please identify yourselves and we look forward to this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Agren and City Council members. I'm Chris Lama, Director of Community and Library Services, and joined here tonight by Mike O'Connell, President and CEO of the Irvine Ranch Conservancy. So at the council meeting on March 12th of 2024, in response to a memo submitted by Councilmember Carroll, City Council directed the city manager to initiate a study to identify the feasibility of creating a new Southern Open Space Trail system. So since then, city staff has engaged with our partners at Irvine Ranch Conservancy to conduct an assessment of wildlife and human activity within the V Creek and Mule Deer open space areas. This is just the first step in determining opportunities for new trail connections. And we're looking forward to any feedback the council may have before proceeding with any further planning efforts, which would also include conversations with various community stakeholders. So that said, I'd like to turn over to Mike O'Connell to summarize the findings of the study.
Thank you, Chris. It's, as always, a joy to be here. Hello to everyone. It's good to see you. We spent about six months gathering data and then six months analyzing it, looking at wildlife and human activity and also existing infrastructure in the Mule Deer and V Creek open space areas. As Chris said, it's sort of the preliminary status assessment before any planning would occur. So I want to share the results of that with you and get any feedback and questions you might have. Let's see, okay. So as I mentioned, in late 2024, there are three purposes of the study, to look at natural resources, mostly wildlife, birds, mammals, and things like that. We didn't do any detailed studies of insects or reptiles. Human activity, which includes both authorized activity out there and trespass. There is actually a history of very interesting activities that have gone in the V Creek area and we can talk about that a little bit, but we wanted to take a look and see what was going on now. And then, as I mentioned, the infrastructure. So we used a number of methods in order to gather these data. We used our camera traps, both for wildlife movement and also for human access. And we identified different locations for the wildlife cameras versus the human access cameras. We used trail counters to try to also triangulate on some of the human activity that's going on out there. And we used a new technology that we've been using more and more in our surveying, which is acoustic recorders, which record both bats and birds. And very interesting results of that. We also use some field observations and historical information about various things that have gone out there. I want to note that, let's see if I can get it, there we go. That this, the area we're talking about is actually not part of the approved open space preserve resource and recreation management plan. You recall in 2007, there was a resource and recreation management plan that was approved by the city council to authorize trails in the Southern Open Space. This area was still being planned for development and the land had not been turned over yet to the city. And so this is additional land on top of that. So it does not have the benefit of an existing resource or trail plan. So our methods, we had camera traps. We had four camera traps for wildlife. You can see them here. They're identified as WC for wildlife camera. And then three cameras for human activity. We had some in the, in the V Creek area. And then the left-hand exhibit is the, the Mule Deer area. One of the things that happened during this study was we had a lot of interesting reactions to the, the cameras and the counters being out there. We had four cameras stolen. We had three memory cards stolen from cameras. Someone figured out how to get inside the locked box and took the three. So we had seven data collection units lost. And that did affect the data because we only serviced those cameras once every couple of weeks. And if someone stole the camera the first night, then we would miss two weeks worth of data. So that was a very interesting result. The trail counters were placed at two major access points and we feel like we had got some good data there as well. The acoustic recorders aid in identifying in particular the listed species that may be of concern that would be interesting for part of our planning. And we had one of those recorders stolen as well. So these are the acoustic recorder locations. The results from the wildlife cameras, there's some wildlife activity out there. We detected coyotes, a number of birds, squirrels, domestic dogs, mule deer, raccoons, rabbits. Not a lot of unusual wildlife, pretty much what we would expect. There were no bobcats detected during the study period of six months. Nothing any more interesting than, than a coyote. I do want to note the 62 species of birds, that's a pretty interesting and high number. But you can see we had some nice wildlife selfies that were taken by the wildlife themselves. The trail counters, we detected 1,193 counts in V Creek and 1,204 counts in Mule Deer. Those are just a general number. Don't take 1,204 to mean there were 1,200 individual different people out there. It could be people going out and coming back. There's a number of different reasons, but that's, that's more of an indication of the volume of activity that's going on out there. And the access cameras confirm that. We had in V Creek 456 incidents of trespass and 141 incidents of authorized use. There are some utility roads out there. IRWD has a facility out there and we saw their trucks. There was Orange County Fire Authority and various other access. In Mule Deer, there were 149 trespasses and 112 authorized use. There's some of the trespass activities. And you can see it's of a bunch of different types. Motorized motorcycles, people jumping fences, all kinds of interesting stuff. This is consistent with what we've observed anecdotally over the history of, of paying attention to that site. Not, not unusual, but again, we were trying to get at how much is going on out there. And I would describe that amount of activity as pretty moderate, not low, but also not extreme. Our acoustic recorders detected, I put this slide in here for you, Councilmember Tricia. These are our data from the acoustic recorders. We actually heard seven listed bird species, including the California netcatcher, cactus wren, the leasebells virio. I do want to note that most of the sensitive bird species are found in the riparian area, which is up on the upper right, and I can show you the map in a moment. And we also found four bat species, including one, the western red bat, which is a California special concern species. So the existing infrastructure includes the utility access road, which is right there. That goes from Lake Forest Drive down to the intersection roughly of Ridge Route, which sort of stubs out in Laguna Woods. That is a two-track road and it's where most of the authorized activity occurs. There are a lot of unauthorized social trails coming mostly from Laguna Woods. We saw a lot more activity coming from the Laguna Woods, Laguna Hills area at the end of Ridge Route than we did from the Los Olivos and some of the newer developments to the north. There is an unmanaged gated access point off Lake Forest Drive. That's the area where you saw people hopping fences. And that, that's another potential access point. And then there is a gated access in the Mule Deer area on the other side of Highway 133. That's pretty much the existing infrastructure on this parcel. So in summary of our findings, there are moderate rates of trespass and authorized access out there. There is human activity out there of relatively frequent. And as you could see from the photos, some of it's the kind of activity that's not normally allowed and authorized in open space areas. Most of the trespassers accessed from the Laguna Woods, Laguna Hills area. There were a number of recurring users that we saw. Trespassers also used the creek to access from Lake Forest Drive by climbing under or over the fence. As I said before, the notable wildlife includes mule deer and coyote, but nothing really remarkable other than the seven listed bird species that we saw. A very high bird diversity. And one thing to note as we move toward planning is that most of the existing infrastructure is located near the sensitive resource areas. The riparian corridor there is where most of the sensitive resources are found and that's also where most of the existing infrastructure is. And I want to give a note about historical examples of illegal activity out there. They've been, it's not constant, but we've had incidents in the past over the last 20 years. We had a, a small marijuana grow out there one time, which the, the chief and his team took care of immediately. We've had a homeless encampment. We've had small fire starts out there. We've had even someone who created a little private golf driving pad and was hitting golf balls out into the open space. So there's a lot of interesting stuff that's happened in the past, essentially all adding up to this is unmanaged activity that's out there. So that's the result of our assessment. As Chris said, we're looking forward to the next steps and I have, happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, thank you for, for that report. And let me, on behalf of the whole council, just thank you for all the extraordinary work you've done over the years to foster, expand, manage, and otherwise see to it that our open space and trail systems not only remain intact, but serve these generations and future generations to come. How long have you been at it now?
Almost 21 years.
There we go. Did he get 20-year employee recognition or not? We'll have to arrange for something.
We feel like we're part of the team, that's for sure. Thank you.
Certainly are, thank you. Let me turn to Councilmember Carroll, who has been, I think, a key driving force behind. think, a key driving force behind the Southern Open Space Trail, that whole system. Councilmember Carroll?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to thank Chris and the staff team, and of course, Mike McConnell from the Irvine Ranch Conservancy. Thank you. I know you've had a long day today. I'm really happy and surprised to see you here and really thrilled that you're here, and thanks for the detail of that presentation. You know, earlier today, we had an opportunity to meet with staff and a couple of stakeholders and sort of local partners, and it was just really exciting to sit there and get the map out and look at some of the detail that's really been rounded out here tonight. I also want to thank our city manager's predecessor, City Manager Oliver Chee also started the initiative as well, and working with him was really, really helpful in kickstarting this idea. But just to zoom out for a second, for everyone to understand what we're presenting here, it feels like it's part of the completion of a process that has started many, many years ago, really so much under the stewardship of the Irvine Ranch Conservancy. And that's, you know, it's the second piece, sort of maybe call it a two-piece thing. We have this missing middle or this middle piece right between what we have kind of been taught up here as council members, is the idea of connecting this amazing, unique, unlike anywhere else on the planet, thriving open space to be a mountains-to-the-sea system, where someone could enjoy, you know, passive recreation, walking, running, or using their bike and getting literally from the mountains to the sea, or just choosing any portion thereof and enjoying it. And as someone that is fortunate enough to live near the open space, the Bomber Canyon open space, it's a joy to drive past, let alone to get out there, park, and have a chance to walk, and just even spend just a few minutes, and it's a transporting experience. So this part is really, to me, and I think to us, is a big part of the completion of the system, the completion of the southern portion, where, as you said exactly, in 2007, we had this plan that predates most of us here that we clearly need to update as well for that portion of land within our boundaries that we can utilize for the connectivity to everything that's sitting in the Orange County land and the Laguna Coast Wilderness area. So it's really super exciting, very interesting always to get those cameras. And I appreciated you saying, and I guess maybe you could, not too much different than, for example, the Bomber Canyon cameras that I know you presented to our Community Services Commission when I sat on there, you know, some 10 years ago. Is it the same type of things that you see?
More or less. The Bomber Canyon access is much more actively managed, and so you see a difference in the type of activity. We saw everything from dirt bikes to strollers in V-Creek, and you don't see that kind of thing in Bomber. You see people hiking and people were watching and riding bikes.
Right. And then if we move to that point where we have you, our most natural partner, working on actively managing that, that sort of southern, that V area, V-
Creek.
How do we call it?
V-Creek.
V-Wash or V-Creek?
V-Creek.
Yeah, that V-Creek area, that kind of piece that already, you know, connects. I think some of the, you know, the public testimony here earlier, it just really speaks to the fact that we can just kind of create that connectivity that really, it's just kind of filling out, if you will, the broad strokes into the small minor details, if you will, of the master plan, a map, if you will. Any challenges that you see, Mike, that you can talk to us about as we kind of go forward? We learned earlier, just for everyone's benefit, that, you know, this land, you know, is, I guess, part of it is County of Orange, managed by Laguna Beach, and part of it maybe just be Laguna Beach, and of course, there's our piece, which the V-Creek, which is our piece, up to a certain point. Any challenges in that? Is it just kind of a large coordination process?
Well, open space is always a challenge to manage, and you have identified, I think, one of the major ones, which is coordination among adjacent landowners. The county does own all the land to the south, and so there will need to be coordination with them. Another thing that I foresee in planning is that, unlike the rest of the southern open space, these lands are not enrolled in the natural community conservation plan, so there's no regulatory coverage there, which means that any plans will have to at least address that. And I can think of some options for how to do that, but that will be an issue as well. I think also some of the restrictions on the various lands, the land immediately to the south, Laguna Laurel, is owned by the county, but there's a conservation easement in favor of the nature conservancy, and there are terms and conditions there. However, there is a resource plan for that land that identifies some potential trails. So challenges, yes, but also lots of opportunities for options.
Great. And just quick, you know, we don't have the map up unfortunately with the video here, but are we able to, with all those intersections of land ownership and management, do you think it's possible that we could get people that, once we were, when we're successful in opening this southern access, can we get people that are coming from Irvine into this area to go past those water features? I know there's basically what, two small lakes there.
There are two permanent lakes, one of the few lakes in the county that are natural. Those are part of Laguna Coast Wilderness Park, so assuming that everyone can get together and agree on an access pattern and things like that, then I don't see why not.
Great. Well, thank you very much, and I just want to thank Mayor. And also, just also point out that there's, you know, for those of us up here that, you know, enjoy, you know, interpretation and history and heritage, there's an incredible opportunity to really honor and, you know, talk about indigenous, you know, living and culture, and really with a nod to our past and to our very way past, with the opportunity to just teach along the way. So just really, the options are really plentiful and exciting. So thank you today, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Carroll. I'll turn now to Councilmember Treceder.
Hi. Thanks so much for your presentation and for doing this study. It's a lot of data. I just wanted to ask, based on what you have found, would you recommend that the city change our practices at all in how we manage this area or the areas surrounding it?
That's an excellent question. I think the big change that I would recommend is to have this area more actively managed.
Okay.
I think what we're seeing are, I'll give you an example. This is one of the areas where the wildfire detection devices were vandalized before. So there's a lot of stuff going on out there that if we paid a little closer attention on a daily basis, it would make the city safer and the land in better shape.
Okay, that sounds good. And then is there, do you think there's an opportunity to increase access that is authorized without causing any damage to the environment? I know it's tricky. It's tricky to manage that.
I think we can probably find some ways to do that. If you notice from the, in fact, you can even see it on the picture that's up on the screen, in the upper right, that area is the riparian area. That's where most of the sensitive resources are. And if we can figure out a way to have access not in that area, then that might be a good win-win. We'll have to take a look.
Makes a lot of sense. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further requests. I had just one question. As far as the illegal activities out there, have there been any incursions by e-bikers?
I believe that we detected one or two, and they're not the regular e-bikes. They would be the ones that look like little motorcycles out there, but also gasoline-powered ones as well. So, yeah, I think we're seeing e-bikes just about everywhere.
Well, this is part of a larger problem, of course, but we thank you for the presentation, for bringing us up to the minute on all this, and look forward to hearing more from you from time to time. Did you have something further?
All I was wondering is if you had any suggestions or direction about next steps for us and staff. I mean, I think we could put together a set of options to look at from a planning standpoint and make some recommendations. Obviously, there are no recommendations in this assessment, but we could do that if you would like to direct us to do that.
I think we would like that.
Okay.
We would like that, and please feel free to be in touch with Councilmember Carroll, Councilmember Treceder, any and all of us.
Wonderful.
We so appreciate the remarkable work that you do.
Well, it's an honor for us. It truly is.
Thank you. Thank you both. This is a presentation item, so there is no vote on it. I think now we are in a position to move on to public comments. Did, I noticed some people came in. Did you want to acknowledge one more time Mr. Crumbey, our city manager? Did you wish to acknowledge just one more time what has been deleted from the agenda tonight?
Happy to, Mayor. Two items, item 5.3 and item 5.4 have been removed from the agenda, so will not be considered tonight.
And 5.3 and 4, could you identify those?
Yes, thank you for that. Item 5.3 is confirmation of unpaid costs incurred by the city to abate public nuisance conditions at 1851 Kettering Street, and item 5.4 is adoption of climate action and adaptation plan.
Excellent. All right. With those removed, we'll move now to public comments for non-agendized items. This is the place in our council meeting where people can address the council as to just about any matter that is not on the printed agenda. These non-agendized items that can be brought forward will be contained within a 30-minute total time period allotted for this. Non-agendized items can include any item that is generally within the purview of our jurisdiction here as a municipality. And with that, I'll turn to our city clerk to tell me how many people have requested to be heard.
Thank you, Mayor. We have 13 requests to speak.
13. So why don't we limit the speakers to two minutes? And if one or two come in and still want to be heard, they'll be given 90 seconds, and we should get all that in within the 30 minutes, all right? With that, would you call the first public commenter, please?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could call forward Patrick Thomas, Susan Sayer, Allison Walter, Victory Allen, Alan Meyerson, and Mona. And we'll start with Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Aggron and councilmembers. So my name is Patrick Thomas. I'm the Director of Government Relations for City Side Fiber, and I just want to give you a brief update on the status of our project to deploy fiber optic infrastructure for high-speed internet in Irvine and make Irvine one of the most connected cities in the country. So we started in the neighborhood of West Irvine, and that neighborhood is now complete. That's the neighborhood on the south side of Jamboree and east of Irvine Boulevard. We laid about 40,000 lineal feet of fiber in that neighborhood to serve 785 homes, and those are the homes on the public streets and any private communities we'd also be serving, and that is not included in that number. The second zone that we're currently working on is the zone in and around Heritage Park, and that's south of Jamboree to Jeffrey, between five freeway and the railroad tracks. We're under construction there right now, and in that neighborhood, we'll be laying 211,000 lineal feet of fiber, or about 40 miles, and that'll serve about 5,600 homes in that neighborhood. Next two zones that we'll be working on, and we intend to start construction in those neighborhoods before the end of this year, those are the neighborhoods we call Zone Six and Zone Three. Zone Six is the neighborhoods south or west of the 405 freeway, and that would be the University Park, Turtle Rock, and Rancho Sand Lake areas. In those neighborhoods, we'll be laying about 370,000 lineal feet, or 70 miles of fiber, to serve about 10,000 homes on the private streets, and again, any of the, excuse me, the public streets, and any of the private streets and the private communities would be in addition. And that's about doubles that number, so a pretty significant amount of homes will be able to access the high-speed internet there. And then what we call Zone Three, that's the neighborhood east of the five freeway and the North Park area. In that area, we'll be laying about-
Your time is up.
If you could just wrap up in a few seconds. Also, I assume you have written documentation of this, or you send that along to the city?
Yes, we certainly can.
We'd certainly welcome that, but take another 10 or 15 seconds.
I'll just give you the thumbnail version. So those last two neighborhoods, the Turtle Rock, University Park, and the Northwood, we'll be starting those hopefully before the end of this year and be done by about the middle of 2026. And then we'll move into the middle part in the Woodbridge neighborhoods and be working on those in '26 and '27. So that concludes my report. And any questions? We'd be happy to answer any questions.
No, we appreciate your report and keep us advised of your progress, all right?
Be happy to. And I also wanted to just thank Vice Mayor Mai and city staff. Been really cooperative and really helpful in us and able to move this project forward.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Susan Sayer?
Welcome.
Hello again. My name is Susan Sayer, and I'm an Irvine resident. You, our city council, proudly acknowledge that Irvine is one of the most ethnically diverse cities, and that Irvine is the safest and most supportive city with regards to protecting the health, safety, and welfare of our residents and members of our city workforce. I'm very concerned about the adverse impact ICE enforcement actions are having on people that live and or work in Irvine. I therefore am requesting that the City of Irvine establish two ongoing budget line items to be used to support these ICE enforcement action victims. As immigration violations are civil offenses, not criminal, they are not afforded legal representation. Therefore, I'm requesting that the City of Irvine follow the actions taken by City of Anaheim, Costa Mesa, and Santa Ana, and create an ongoing $250,000 budget line item to be used for contracting for legal services to be provided to ICE victims living and or working in Irvine. As ICE enforcement victims and their families undergo severe economic and personal hardships, I'm requesting that the City of Irvine follow the lead of these other cities to develop an ongoing budget line item of $100,000 to be used for providing housing assistance, support services, and financial aid to ICE victims and their families living and or working in Irvine. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
Allison Walter?
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers, for your time and efforts on the part of urbanites. The community welcomes the ongoing effort to reopen the Katie Wheeler Library with a three-year lease and possible extension. It's wonderful. However, I wish an extension were also possible for the University Park Library. I'm here to request the council prioritize permanent small library branches in the Irvine Public Library future plans, not just for University Park Library, but for all branches. The American Library Association's 2023 budget report states that small libraries are less expensive, easier to manage, and more accessible to communities, based on its annual review of over 100 library budgets nationwide. All urbanites, especially those in Districts 1 and 2, deserve the same access I and my family enjoy at the University Park Library, the only library south of the 405. I urge the council to work toward establishing permanent small libraries sooner rather than later, and to amend Section 2 of Exhibit 4 to extend the University Park Library lease. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that you and others concerned about library issues are in touch with our staff and the preparation of our master plan for library services. Mr. City Manager, could you make sure everybody's connected to that process?
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Victory Allen?
Good evening, Mayor Aggron and city councilmembers. My name is Victory Allen, and I've lived in University Park for a long- My name is Victory Allen, and I've lived in University Park for a long time. And I've talked with you before about University Park Library, but I was thrilled when the report came from our head librarian last time that we were here, and she mentioned University Park Library. So we are on the agenda, and I'm really thrilled about that. So I'm going to divert a little bit, because I want to talk about the main library. I think it should be the primary library in Irvine in the Great Park, because I see the possibility of that becoming a world-class library. We have, you know, we have the city, and we have the type of population that would want that, that would demand that. So I'm really hoping that eventually that that will be a world-class library. Enough about world-class libraries. I want to talk, I want to take you on a little journey from University Park Library to the proposed Bill Barber Library. To get there with a car, there's, in University Park, there's a four-way stop sign, not a stop sign, but a stop sign. And then there are eight, eight signals that you have to pass through to get to, from University Park to the, to the library. And that's a long ways for a library. We in University Park have all been spoiled, because we have a library that, a local library that we can walk to, and it has made such a wonderful library. Our library is wonderful, and our bookstore is wonderful, and I, you know, I'm not opposed to the bigger libraries, but I think Irvine establishes villages, but, and I think Irvine would do well to have smaller libraries in the community, because I really don't want people with, that have an eight-stoplight journey to get to a library. So I'm just strongly, strongly urging that we have community, smaller community libraries in Irvine, as well as, you know, especially the one in the Great Park. But there could be another, another big library, too. But, you know, but small libraries are where it's at.
Thank you, and I know you're part of the process. Keep at it, keep channeling your point of view to, into the process, and I think ultimately coming out the other side will be good policy. So if you want to be in touch with anybody tonight, you can, but I know you're part of the process, Victoria.
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Alan Meyerson?
Good evening, Councilmember Alan Meyerson. I wanted to speak today about the proposed amphitheater at the Great Park. I heard, I was watching earlier, and I heard a lot of people that live there concerned about funding for a lot of projects out there. I've been to the temporary amphitheater a few times this year, and I think the city has a unique opportunity to save a lot of money and have a unique venue. One thing I've noticed about the temporary amphitheater is it's very flexible. They can set it up for the Pacific Symphony, they can set it up for a rock concert, they can set it up for festivals, so you're not locked in to just doing one thing like you would be at a permanent amphitheater. I know the City of Long Beach is planning on a permanent amphitheater, which is another one, so the city would have to compete with them for acts. So I think the city has a unique opportunity to really take a look at the temporary amphitheater, making it permanent. It would be a lot cheaper, the city would save a lot of money, and there would be a more, the more flexibility in the type of acts that could be there. So I hope the city takes this recommendation to heart, and really has the committee that's looking into this and planning this, takes a serious look at doing something like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mona? And if I could also call forward Lee Handy, Joanne Slobodian, Sandra, Heidi, and Rema.
Before, before you speak, just a moment. Have we shut down the additional opportunity for folks to enter the queue?
There was one late, one late individual that signed up via Zoom, but other than that, it's the same number.
All right, we're accepting no more, so we'll manage to hear from everyone. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to start by actually supporting what Susan Sayer was saying. We talk about DEI, and we do need to figure out some funding for legal services, for help for our community. We are diverse, and it is about DEI. What brought me here today is actually watching a DEI committee meeting this past week, on the 23rd. And you guys are the ones that put these people in a position to be a committee, to serve us and you, to create something that is inclusive of diversity, right? Inclusion. What I found out is that they don't do that. It is not a committee I would want to go to. Why? Everybody knows at this point, if you're here, Mona, who's going to be in front of you? Even when I call in, you guys know, everybody knows. When I called in to make a comment, I heard laughter. These are not the people that I want to be defending me or looking at me as somebody different. It was like putting in a call to the Mean Girls Club. I know that Betty was present at that meeting. She was harassed for being there. You guys, every single one of you, have an opportunity to observe the people that you send to be representatives of yourself and for us, the people. So I really appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Lee Handy?
Thank you. I know I'm a regular, but I can't help it. I love libraries, and I particularly love our Irvine libraries, as I know all of you sitting up there do. So I just have a few comments, because perhaps unfortunately for everyone, I've been doing some more brainstorming. You know, we heard from Julie and Chris Slama last city council meeting, they did a wonderful update on our Irvine library system. And what I'd like to talk about are some, considering some suggestions for some creative ideas for providing more access to libraries immediately, because we've talked about midterm, we've talked about future, far-term, but right now, they're, of course, doing a wonderful job of getting university and heritage going, and we're going to have Katie Wheeler soon. But I also think in the short term, we could do some leasing, and I, and beyond that, of course, leasing has its own problems, but it could be done, we could rent some spaces and get those on board very quickly. But the other thing I'd like to bring up is what about looking at some public spaces? What about going to the schools? And don't laugh, because Corona del Mar has done it. What about the fire stations? Because they got the combo there. And what about maybe a room or two here in City Hall for a small library? Wouldn't that be great? I don't know. I can't see Julie or Chris's face right now. So I, I think the cost would be minimal, because the services provided would be basic for these very small, perhaps, short-term, very short-term libraries. We could have checking out books, perhaps, at children's storytime. Yet, the small libraries in these-
Thank you, your time is up.
Finish your thought.
The small libraries in these spaces would give, would be low-cost but high in neighborhood satisfaction, and provide immediate, immediate approach to more libraries in Irvine. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Joanne Slobodian?
Hi, everyone.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Recently, a public survey about Oak Creek Golf Course claimed the city has approved 5,000 units and will spend $50 million to buy back an easement. Those statements appeared because two longstanding city issues remain unresolved: a Scrivener's error that mislabeled the Oak Creek driving range as residential instead of recreational, and the unrecorded open space easement required under Resolution 88-1. Both must be corrected to regain public trust. We've also seen what happens when oversight slips. The city is now facing a $2 million dispute over Great Park cleanup costs after consultants allegedly understated contamination. That's a reminder of why accuracy and transparency matter. At the same time, my public records request for the Oak Creek easement and SEQA information have been denied, and that only deepens public concern. Even former Planning Commissioner Dr. Harvey List, a close ally of Mayor Ayr Aigrin, once sued Anaheim for violating SEQA over the Veterans Cemetery. It's ironic that the Mayor Aigrin is now advancing ballots at Oak Creek without completing a proper SEQA review. And let's remember, Voice of OC recently exposed corruption that led performer supervisor Andrew Doe to prison, proof that accountability and transparency always protect the public in the end. So I'm asking the council to correct the general plan overlay to restore Oak Creek's driving range as recreational, record the Resolution 88-1 easement owed to the residents, and release the public records being withheld. Irvine has always done things the right way. Please continue that tradition openly, honestly, and with the community at your side. Thank you for your service and for listening. I appreciate you.
Thank you for sharing your views with us.
Sandra?
Welcome.
I know we've kind of kicked the Oak Creek down the road until next year, but I was looking at our local newspaper, and I noticed this where it says Irvine's Open Prescription, Parks is Medicine. So I just want to reiterate that, you know, driving through Bomber Canyon and Turtle Rock is gorgeous. It's really nice. And I just am asking, please do not take the only green open space that we have in the central part of Irvine away from us. If anybody has driven there on Irvine Center Drive, you can see what a great amount of traffic there is. It's so bad. It's so bad. So additional pollution, blah, 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 don't even care about that. Just give us our green space. It belongs to the residents of Irvine, and we should be able to maintain it. And I just wanted to mention that this kind of goes back to the voter passing that we did back for W with the airport, where at that time, the Great Park, we had amended Orange County general plan to allow the marine bays to close, and it was supposed to be used for a multi-purpose central park, open space, nature reserve, universities and schools, cultural facilities, Veterans Cemetery, and very little housing and commercial development. However, that has not been the case, and it is just, you know, there's several things, I know, that when they put the school, that Mayor Aigrin was kind of resistant to it because of the pollution, but that was primarily why they had wanted to do that type of, you know, no houses there. And so the same thing is with Oak Creek, too. What type of pollution? Why did the Irvine company trade it? What might be the issues with regard to the ability to have strong structures and not have any type of chemical responses?
Your time is up.
Yeah, so.
Thank you for your comments.
Heidi?
While I set this up, hopefully you'll get a copy of the literature I have. I'll wait for Carol.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Heidi Francois, founder of Finding Us All, a campaign uniting MAGA Republicans like me with Democrats, independents, and everyone tired of state overreach. I voted for Trump three times, by the way. We're here tonight with Save Oak Creek, Save Irvine Allies, to plant a common sense seed. State mandates are bulldozing Oak Creek open space into 3,100 homes, killing local control on housing, schools, and parks. One-by-one fights drain us. We need a coalition hammer. So I'm now going to read the resolution that you have before you. This is the Local Control Defense Resolution, a resolution of the City Council of Irvine, California, declaring opposition to state mandates that erode local control, establishing a multi-city legal defense fund, and calling for federal preemption support. Whereas state mandates on housing density, school policy, and environmental rules strip power from local voters and burden families red and blue alike. And whereas the Irvine company's push to bulldoze Oak Creek open space into 3,100 homes is one symptom of Sacramento overreach, forcing top-down development that ignores community voice. And whereas citizens from MAGA Republicans to progressive Democrats agree, local solutions beat states, state dictates. And whereas on U.S. Constitution Supremacy Clause empowers federal intervention when state tramples local rights. Now therefore, be it resolved, the city, number one, the city opposes all unfunded state mandates that override local zoning, education, or open space protections. Number two, the city joins Finding Us All Coalition to create a 50,000 legal defense pool with neighboring cities for federal lawsuits. Number three-
Your time is up.
I'm almost finished. The city directs staff to petition Congress and DOJ for blanket preemption tying federal funds to local control protections. Number four, the city calls on all residents, Trump voters, independents, Democrats, to sign the Finding Us All petition.
Thank you.
This 50,000 legal defense seat isn't just for Irvine, it's a multi-city war chest to sue Sacramento and beg federal preemption. Red voters protect property rights, blue voters save green spaces.
Thank you.
We all win when local families decide, not state bureaucrats.
Thank you. We have your printed version of this as well.
Yeah.
And with that, we thank you for your comments.
I'll email this to all the council members in a few minutes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dennis. Dennis, you may unmute your mic.
Oh, we've got one more.
I'm sorry, Dennis. My fault. I'm sorry, Nima. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Aigrin, Vice Mayor James Mye, and the phenomenal city council members here in Irvine. I'm Reema Neshashibi, and I'm founder and president of Global Hope 365. It's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit to end harmful practices towards women and girls, such as child marriage, human trafficking, and other forms of gender-based violence. I'm here today to thank Mayor Larry Aigrin, Vice Mayor James Mye, and Councilmember Mike Carroll for not only co-hosting the fifth annual walk run with us on September 27, but also co-sponsoring it. And let me tell you, I received so many responses from the attendees about the comments that you all made, which highlighted the fact that we still have 34 out of the 50 states have legal. Child marriage is still legal, and in four states, including California, there's zero minimum age. I mean, at this day of age, when you have zero minimum age in California and three other states, it's unconscionable. And the relationship with the City of Irvine has been here for a long time, because you are the first city to pass our resolution to end child marriage under 18, no exception, when Farah Khan was a council member and Christina Shay was the mayor. And I wanted to especially thank one of your staff members. Her name is Lupe Guadalupe, but she's called Lupe Aburso. Her title is Facilities Reservation Coordinator, Community, and Library Services. She is phenomenal, phenomenal. She made the whole lengthy, time-consuming reservation process very easy, and she's highly responsive, and I can't thank her enough. I love the open Jeffrey Space Trail. We're going to be there again next year, and our event is going to be September 12. We're going to be there again next year, and our event is going to be September 12. And I know one of the staff, if he's here, Ryan Glimp, always win the 5K run. So it's either Krista or Ryan, but Ryan has been winning it for the last two times. So we're thankful not just for you, but for your staff. Kevin Cargan was here. So thank you again for supporting our work to end child marriage and human trafficking.
And thank you for all the good work you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Now we'll go to Zoom speakers. Our next speaker is Dennis. Dennis, you may unmute your mic.
Dear Mayor and Council Members, my name is Dennis Low, and I'm the president of Ultra Hills 3 Reserve HOA. The Ultra Hills neighboring communities, including Ultra Hills 1, 2, 3, and Northwood Point, learned about Northwood High School Field Lighting and PA Improvement Project and its draft environmental impact report about a week ago. And several of us, four members, attended the one and only public meeting to learn about the project the very first time. The community members had great concerns about the impact of the project. We understand council members Betty Franco and Melinda Liu met with IUSD Liaison Office recently in September. The Ultra Hill community board representatives are requesting an in-person meeting with both of you before the November 4th IUSD Board Meeting. Councilwoman Melinda Liu does have my contact information, and we are looking forward to meeting with you to on this important matter affecting our quality of life. Thanks.
Our next speaker is telephone number 347. 347, you may unmute your mic.
Hi, this is Steve Oss. I'm here to address one of the core promises of the Orange County Power Authority, lowering greenhouse gas emissions in our county. After reviewing every power content label and audit available from 2022 through 2024, there is still no verifiable data showing measurable reductions in carbon emissions here in Orange County or even in Irvine. OCPA's website advertises a claim of, quote, "2 billion pounds of carbon eliminated," end quote. But there is no posted mythology explaining how that number was calculated, no baseline year, no verification, and no third-party audit. The only official data OCPA publishes are state-required power mix disclosures, the same labels every utility must file. Those labels simply show the percentage of renewable energy purchased. They do not prove any local emission reductions or avoided greenhouse gas output. Even the California State Auditor concluded that OCPA, quote, "needs to strengthen transparency," end quote, and noted that its website lacks information about reductions achieved by its higher renewable service. The city of Irvine funded this organization, and we deserve independently verified results. No marketing claims from CEO Joe Mosca that has known credibility issues. If we can't get this information, what does that say about our credibility? Irvine should seriously question its continued participation and the damage it will continue to cause by misleading its citizens. Thank you.
Our next speaker is DC. DC, you may unmute your mic.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Agron and City Council Members. I'm Daniel Campos. I'm an Irvine resident living in Woodbridge, and I'm speaking tonight in support of Pretend City Children's Museum. It's upcoming move to the Great Park and the city of Irvine's investment in this remarkable institution. Pretend City has long been a cherished part of Irvine, serving as a beacon of early childhood education, family engagement, and community enrichment. It's a place where imagination soar, learning happens through play, and caregivers find invaluable resources. The move to the Great Park is an exciting new chapter. Pretend City isn't just a museum. It's the Great Park's investment in the next generation of children and families. The larger space means reaching more children, especially those who previously had limited access. In our growing city, a center like this is truly invaluable. Looking ahead to the groundbreaking and the 2027 opening, I am excited for ones to come. This project brings hope and opportunity for generations. It shows Irvine's commitment to building a vibrant, healthy, and connected community. On behalf of families and community members, thank you, City Council, for your support. Your investment in Pretend City is an investment in Irvine's future. Thanks for doing everything you can to help the museum succeed.
Our last speaker is a Zoom user. You may unmute your mic. You have 90 seconds.
Hi, this is Melissa Cabrera. I currently live in Irvine Great Park. I just have a few health and safety concerns, and I reached out, and I haven't really received any answers. And it's mostly just concerns for like our CFD funds going to the spaces that are around the residents in Great Park and seeing how they're being used for nonprofits, which I think is great. But I would just really would love for our spaces to be done, both for our safety and for our health, around our, like, homes. And I was just wanting to voice my concerns. Thank you for your time.
And that is all, Mayor.
Thank you. That concludes our public comments section for non-agendized items, allowing us to resume our progress with the regular posted agenda, which takes us next to the city manager's report. Mr. Crumbie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing tonight, I'd like to take a brief moment to share that on October 18th, Jamboree Housing Corporation celebrated its 35th anniversary with a special gala event recognizing leaders who've advanced affordable housing and community well-being. At this milestone event, Jamboree debuted its inaugural Legacy Award, presented to our very own Mayor Larry Agron in honor of his decades of leadership in expanding affordable housing and creating inclusive communities here in Irvine. Jamboree highlighted Mayor Agron and labeled him as a trailblazing public servant whose leadership has shaped one of the most inclusive and forward-thinking housing landscapes in the nation. Just wanted to take a quick minute to say congratulations, Mayor Agron.
Thank you. That was not pre-programmed, right?
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much. And of course, we're all participants in a long and distinguished record of providing affordable housing here in Irvine, all of us who served on this and previous city councils. So go on with your report.
It's a team effort, and you didn't ask us to do that. We wanted to do that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Did you have an update on ICE activity in town?
We didn't prepare one, but I think the chief could quickly talk about it.
Thank you, Mayor. No updates since the last council meeting.
No activity that's been reported to us?
Not that we're aware of.
Thank you. I think we should make that a staple in every council meeting because I think there's tremendous citywide concern about that. All right?
Certainly.
Thank you. All right, well, with the city manager's report concluded, we move to announcements, committee reports, council reports. This is an opportunity for council members to briefly report on activities that they've been engaged in, reflective of goings-on in their districts and in the city itself. We like to keep these reports brief if we can. If you need a little additional information, please ask me. Otherwise, please keep your reports under five minutes. With that, Councilmember Liu wants to be recognized, followed by Councilmember Martinez Franco, and then Councilmember Carroll. Councilmember Liu.
Good evening. I'm excited to share some of the things that we've been doing in the community in the last few weeks. On October 16th, oh, please, next slide, please. On October 16th, I attended the 25th Annual Black Chamber of Commerce banquet. There I honor my longtime friend, Mary Ann Foo, for her 28 years of service with Ocapaca and its positive impact on the Asian-American community through providing resources and education. Next slide, please. On October 25th, I attended the Cool Irvine Conference of International and Transnational Use, where I spoke to the next generation about how they can get involved through civic engagement to address climate change in their communities. Next, please. On October 22nd, our office attended CERT training provided by IPD, where we learned crucial preparedness and response skills to help people in the event that first responders are delayed, and we look forward to another training session tomorrow. And next, please. On November 7th, our office in Radiant Futures will be hosting an event to shine a light on the impacts of human trafficking. For more details, please check our website and social media post. Next, please. On November 8th, Love Irvine will be hosting its 2025 Citywide Service Serve Day. I encourage you all to come and help your community and meet some new people along the way. And finally, I would really like to give a shout out to OCPA, I mean, OCFA, for their help. My father, over the weekend, had fallen off a few steps and hit his head in the middle of the night, and they were there in no time, and thank you for the quick response. And you literally saved his life, so thank you. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Liu. Councilmember Martinez Franco.
Good evening, everyone. This month, our district office, next, hosted our Health and Wellness Talks, where we invited representatives from the Health and Wellness Department to share updates on their current initiatives and programs benefiting our community. We were also joined by Human Options, who provided an overview of the critical resources and support services they offer to victims of domestic violence. I want to extend my sincere gratitude to all the community members who attended, engaged in thoughtful discussion, and shared valuable feedback on how we continue to improve the quality of life in our district. Next slide. Earlier this month, I also had the honor of attending Shine the Light with Human Options in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This event serves as a reminder of the importance of raising awareness, supporting survivors, and remembering those who were not as fortunate to find safety. I am deeply grateful to all the advocates and partners who continue to work tirelessly toward ending domestic violence in our community. Next slide. Last week, our team participated in the Trunk or Treat event at West Park Elementary School. It was wonderful to connect with families and sharing the community spirit. We decorated our vehicle with a traditional Dia de los Muertos theme and handed our treats to dozens of children. Thank you to the PTI parents and volunteers who made this festive and family-friendly event possible. Next slide, please. Finally, I'd like to share an update from the Lakeview Senior Center. Last month, my older adult commissioner informed me that many seniors who rely on the Irvine Connect Service expressed the need for a bench and a shelter while waiting for transportation. Some residents shared that it was difficult to stand for extended periods of time and that additional shelter would help protect them from the elements of the weather. I brought this concern to our city manager, and I'm pleased to share that thanks to his support, along with Alex Alasar and his Public Works team, the new bench and shelter have already been installed. I want to thank everyone involved for their prompt action and commitment to serving our senior community. Big, big shout out. Thank you. Next slide. And last but not least, scan the QR code on the screen to sign up for my newsletter and social media channels to receive updates of what is happening in our city and our district. Thanks.
Thank you. Next will be Councilmember Carroll.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank everyone for the groundbreaking that occurred this morning. Many of us were there. This was the Flying Leatherneck Aviation Museum at the Great Park. As chairman of the Great Park and someone deeply committed preserving the rich history of our city and the El Toro Marine Base, where thousands of men and women served defending our country, I could not be more thrilled to see this project literally get off the ground, pun intended. As you know, the museum will stand on the very soil of the former El Toro Marine Base, which proudly served this nation during World War II, Korean War, Vietnam, and future wars after those wars. This museum will honor the legacy of the Marines who served here and the role that this site played in shaping both Irvine and our nation. Once complete, this museum will be the cornerstone of our great cultural park terrace, celebrating the spirit of service and the innovation that defines our community of Irvine. And I look forward to sharing more about the development of this amazing project. The other thing I'd like to talk about, just changing subjects, this sort of a grave matter, I asked our city council, you can put that up, I asked, actually, you can take that off right now, and then I'll ask you to put it up. Thanks, Tom. I asked my city, our city manager to, in a sort of a deep-politicized way, to reach out to this Orange County Power Authority about something that I had heard occurred. After three emails, the first two emails consisted of myriad tables that made no sense, but after the third email, which I'm happy to share with my colleagues, it was disclosed that the Orange County Power Authority increased tens of thousands of Irvine ratepayers utility rate by exactly 13.67%. You can put the slide up now. If you go to the Orange County Power Authority website, you can click this yellow button. And as effective as of October 20th, 2025, you will click that button, and I don't have the next slide, but it goes to a bunch of tables. Here's what it does not say. It does not say that tens of thousands, I don't know how the mayor can do the math quicker than I can, as we learned earlier, the percentage of people that are on the basic rate got their power rates increased 13.67%. I had conversation with our two board members. This is not about our board members, and I'm sure they'll have plenty to say about it with that management over there. The rates were raised. It is totally predatory. SCE raised rates on their customers. That did not require the Orange County Power Authority, an agency that I personally formed so that the rates could be lower, to then subsequently raise their rates 13.67%. This is simple math. You do not need a PhD to understand this. The cost with which they buy their power are on long-term contracts that did not change. Therefore, the basic rate that Orange County provides, tens of thousands, Power Authority provides to tens of thousands of our residents should be about 18% less than SCE's rates. This did not require the Orange County Power Authority to raise their rates 13.67%, but they did. Now, is the Orange County Power Authority a true competitor to provide lower energy and cleaner energy? Or is it the little brother or little sister of SCE? It is clearly the latter. I am calling you out, Orange County Power Authority. Lower these rates immediately. I will not stop speaking about this. I will ask the city council to send out a mailer and ask for four votes to do that to every resident. If you won't say that you raised your power 13.67%, I will say it. I will ask the city council to say it because this or a agency did that. No power contracts changed. Cost is cost. The Orange County Power Authority raised your power rates 13.67%, and they didn't tell you. And if you go to their, figure this out, and someone tells you, and they go to their website, and you click on that yellow button, you will not be able to figure it out. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Carroll. Councilmember Mai.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Carroll, for bringing that up to our attention. We'll definitely be speaking to OCPA management regarding this. Speaking of that, let's just jump into my announcements. First one is about Orange County Power Authority. And if you can pull up the slides, just a information thing there. OCPA, we've been negotiating aggressively as directed by council, and the negotiations have been going aggressively well. So we have an agreement with the bank of that OCPA and its bank to be paid back the $7.5 million immediately to begin the payback of that. That payback should be in November, so we should have it. The money, the first payment is going to be in November. I confirm that we will be having the money wired. I wasn't comfortable with just the wired. I wasn't comfortable with just the wired. I have requested that Joe Mosca, the CEO of OCPA, attend the next council meeting in person and present us a check in person to the city council. That will be happening as well. In addition to that, ratepayers are to remain below SCE rates, as Councilmember Carol mentioned. We're going to be talking to them about that further as well. But that was one of the contingent items, and that has been met or should be met. Also, we will be retaining two seats on the OCPA board. Based on the payment schedule and amortization, we won't have to adjust the JPA agreement. We'll retain the two seats until the end of the term of the payback. And if we can go on to the next slide, please. My office hosted an anti-bullying expo. We had over 100 attendees at this expo. Resources for children and those facing bullying, not just only in schools, but also those in charter schools with disabilities, on playgrounds, and within the community. I want to thank the sponsors, Laura House for domestic, their Domestic Violence Shelter in Elise Oveo for coming down, being a sponsor, being a table sponsor for that. Oka Kickboxing, which provided situational awareness to the children and to those training on situational awareness and self-defense. Crime Survivors was also there, an organization that was started here in Irvine, representing people that are facing crime and victims of crimes. Also Iconic Youth, which is fitness and mentorship for children who are at risk. And I also want to especially thank the parents and students that came out from the neighborhood. We had, especially Briwood Elementary School that came out. We had a, parents that came out with signatures, over 150 signatures in support of anti-bullying initiatives. Next slide, please. All right. And earlier this evening, we heard from City Side Fiber. City Side Fiber is not here, but I just wanted to thank them again for their work in the neighborhood and expanding in order to options to all of Irvine. We've also, they've also committed to over $50 million into infrastructure upgrades into the city of Irvine. Just wanted to thank them for that and investing in our community. And finally, next slide, please. I'll be holding a District III Town Hall to discuss items that are going on, or things that are happening within the district and throughout the city. That will be on November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mai. I see no other requests. Let me just make a few announcements. Each year, our community comes together to reflect on the extraordinary bravery and selfless service of the men and women who have served in the U.S. Armed Forces. I invite you to join us for this year's Veterans Day Ceremony on Tuesday, November 11th, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. in the Formal Garden at Colonel Bill Barber Marine Corps Memorial Park. At this special gathering, we will honor our military members, past and present, and recognize the veterans, their families, and military organizations that continue to inspire us through their strength, sacrifice, and unwavering commitment. You can also support our active-duty military this holiday season by donating new unwrapped gifts suitable for infants or children ages 12 and younger to our Holiday Toy Drive. Held in partnership with the Irvine 211 Marine Adoption Committee, this gift drive runs from November 1st through December 13th and includes two drive-through drop-off events on Sunday, December 7th, and Saturday, December 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. For a list of drop-off locations and for more information, please visit Irvine 211, that's 211, irvine211marines.org. For more information about our Veterans Day Ceremony, call 949-724-6606, or visit cityofirvine.org/specialevents. Next, our community, the entire community, is invited to experience the 43rd Annual Holiday Fair on Saturday, November 8th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Great Park Palm Court Arts Complex. This event offers handmade works for sale by over 100 local and regional craft makers. It features seasonal decor, ceramics, jewelry, folk art, and more, plus live music and a lot of fun in a very creative atmosphere. Admission and parking are free. Visit artsinirvine.org/holidayfair to learn more about the Holiday Fair as well as current and upcoming art exhibitions. Next, the city of Irvine has partnered with Love Irvine for the 5th Annual Love Irvine Citywide Serve Day on Saturday, November 8th, from 7:00 a.m. to noon. This partnership connects people who want to participate in volunteer activities with nonprofit service providers, faith-based organizations, government entities, and schools. There are more than 30 projects available and many ways for residents to make a meaningful impact. A kickoff event will begin at 7:30 a.m. at Woodbridge Village Center, and afterward, volunteers will report to their respective volunteer locations. To view Love Irvine's Citywide Serve Day projects and register, visit loveirvine.org/servday. We all look forward to our community coming together to make a difference. Next, the city of Irvine is accepting nominations for the Wall of Recognition from November 1st through December 30th. Established at Colonel Bill Barber Marine Corps Memorial Park in 2006, the Wall of Recognition honors those who have made significant and lasting contributions to our community. Eligible nominees must have lived, worked, studied, or operated within the city and demonstrated meaningful impact through excellence initiative or long-term dedication. Completed applications are due December 30th by 5:00 p.m. and can be submitted by email, in person, or by mail. Nomination forms and details are available at cityofirvine.org-publicrecognition. And finally, an announcement from my own office. Irvine residents are invited to an important wildlife, I'm sorry, wildfire safety briefing. Join me and others in my office for an informative session with the Orange County Fire Authority and Community Emergency Response Team, known as CERT, and their experts. Don't miss this opportunity to hear directly from the professionals dedicated to keeping our community safe. Everyone is welcome. The wildfire safety briefing will take place Thursday, October 30th. It's a meet and greet at 5:30, and the formal program, which will be very engaging, begins at 6:00 p.m., lasting till 7:30. That's this Thursday. The location is right here at the Irvine City Hall. An RSVP is preferred but not required. Please use the QR code on the screen to RSVP. For questions, please contact my office at j b a r a n. That's j b a r a n@cityofirvine.org. We, of course, look forward to seeing many of you at this wildfire safety briefing. Thank you. I think that concludes all of our announcements, allowing us to move to the next item on our agenda, which is the Consent Calendar. Consent calendar items on our agenda, which consist of items 3.1 through 3.10 tonight, are considered to be routine of a non-controversial nature and are handled typically on a single roll-call vote. Members of the public are allowed to offer their comments before we move the consent calendar. And of course, council members also have an opportunity to remove items from the consent calendar. So, mindful of that, how many requests do we have to be heard from the public under the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. We have four requests to speak, three on item 3.4 and one on 3.7.
I'm wondering, well, let's, we want to leave that open for the time being. So, with that, again, the consent calendar's items 3.1 through 3.10, I think at this time we should take public comment. Would the clerk please call those requesting to be heard, call them forward? And if the commenters could please identify the specific consent calendar item that they would wish to address. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And just one point of clarity, I do have one on Zoom as well.
One on Zoom, three in person and one on Zoom. All right.
There's actually four in person, one on Zoom.
Four in person, okay. The queue is still open. Call the first speaker forward because thereafter, instead of three minutes, those speakers will be given 90 seconds.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could call forward Phil, Lee Handy, and Michaela M., and Jay Bruce. And we'll start with Phil.
The three minutes or is it 90 seconds?
You get three minutes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Councilmember Cheddar, Councilwoman Martinez-Franco, Councilman Carol, Councilman, Councilmember Lou, Councilmember Gold, Vice Mayor Mai, and Mayor Agren, thank you for taking the time to listen to this. My name is Phil Pham. I've been an Irvine resident for an accumulation of 13 years, and personally, I've traveled to many libraries near and far, including University, Katy Wheeler, Heritage Park, and even UCI's Science Library for when I was a student there. I've also been to libraries afar, such as Vancouver, Chicago, Boston, when I was living there, Yale's Benekys, Schwartzman Library in New York, for example, and also local, such as Huntington Library and Cerritos. As an adult, to this day, they still mesmerize me and how beautiful those libraries are. But let me tell you a story about my childhood memories with a local library. When I was a child, the Chinatown Library in the Los Angeles area was the world to me. To this day, I still remember the smell of the pages, the quiet hum of the lamps, and where a grandparent volunteer helped me to discover my favorite book. It was The Bears, St. Bears. It was a place to read. It was where imagination met community. Today, we have a chance to recreate that magic, not just for children, but also for everyone. A new library isn't merely a building full of books. It's our third place, that essential gathering spot beyond home and work, where people connect, learn, and belong. Imagine a space where teens explore and build robotics, where families attend morning storytimes, and where volunteer grandparents share their wisdom, telling stories, and sharing how to make as simple things like origami. An example was Grandpa Fred back in the Chinatown Library. He was a major influence on my childhood in terms of hearing his stories on World War II, learning about the many languages, such as he actually spoke Cantonese and Spanish. So, como las cosas estan. And basically getting into tech in the early 90s. A library was a place that welcomes every generation and every background because libraries are where communities rediscover themselves. I am excited the city council unanimously voted to prioritize a library in the Great Park on June 24th. And with the ability to start with a clean sheet, a clean sheet of paper at the northern Great Park area, let's give our city a space that's more than shelves and walls. Let's give it a heart. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Lee Handy?
Mine will be very quick. I was just so pleased to see on the consent calendar two items for the libraries, both Great Park and Katy Wheeler. And it was particularly gratifying to see the Great Park being incorporated into the framework plan with the intention to build the library as quickly as possible after funding is procured. We all know that's the hard part, but it's moving in the right direction. I once was a contracts person on the space shuttle, and I remember the engineer saying, when someone said, when the tile fell off, this will tell you it's been a while back, when the tile fell off, the engineer testified, "It's going in the direction of goodness" on their repair. So, we're going in the direction of goodness. I'm very pleased.
Thank you.
Michaela?
Welcome.
Thank you. I just, piggybacking on what Lee said, I'm betraying my ignorance as to protocol here because I thought I would be up here congratulating you guys for making this move. And so, I hope I'm not tempting fate or anything like that, but we're obviously delighted to hear that this has the potential to move forward, both in the Great Park and that Katy Wheeler is coming online. This is an example of the kind of diversity of resources that we envision for the library system going forward. And so, just want to thank you guys for making that possible and showing great leadership and vision. Many thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Jay Bruce?
Welcome, Mr. Bruce.
Hello, city councilmembers. I'm speaking on 3.7 about the Katy Wheeler update. Just to preface, there's nothing to poll. I just had comments on it. I'm excited that we're incorporating the additional staffing costs and thinking about that before we reopen. I think it's a good idea. But I just was thinking that since this is a temporary, well, it's at least that lasts until, if I'm not mistaken, December 31st, 2029, which is three years. In city council terms, not actually a lot. So, we're going to have a few staff members that are assigned to work at a library when, given how things are going with the county, it's not assured that we'll even have the site until after 2029, which is why I just urge the council as a call to action that we should be prepared to have maybe even a temporary library site by 2029 so that those staff, we don't just overstaff Heritage Park and University Park. We have the master plan scheduled for, I think, late 2026 or early 2027. And I personally would look, because we have the Great Park, you know, even though we're expediting it, we have grand ideas of how we want the Great Park to look. So, maybe looking towards the Woodbridge site that was specified in the memorandum of understanding we signed with Irvine Company for the Oak Creek Project. This is a bit more idealistic, but we have a 2028 deadline, I believe, for accepting the deed to the Orchard Hills Parking Lot site that was specified in the MOU. So, we would ideally have something of that sort by 2029. And I really, you know, obviously, even if we have the land by 2028 or so, we still need construction and design. So, I would just suggest that we need to focus on facilities by at least that time so we don't, we have the staff at Katy Wheeler have somewhere to go. And if I can, I also just wanted to take a little bit of time, since I have a minute left, to talk about 3.8, about the $19 million we're giving to extend the contract for, you know, add to the contract for Slurry Seal. I think it's a great idea. I mean, I don't have any problems with that. I mean, it's kind of, you know, filling in the potholes is kind of the test for any municipal government's efficacy, right? government's efficacy, right? So, I don't think, I think it's good that we're taking care of our streets. But I just wanted to make a comment again, that in April, we had the Irvine Connect sort of expansion proposal brought for us, and the lowest cost proposal, I believe, was $1 million annually, and the highest was $7 million annually to the City Council. And people were expressing concerns about the finances of that. Although, if we can bring $19 million, basically out of thin air, just to extend a slurry seal contract, or not even extend, to enhance a slurry seal contract, I think it's worth considering that maybe we do have money in the city's fund that we can bring to those sorts of projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, on that point, Mr. Bruce, because I know you're a student of city government, I think you should be in touch with your staff, with our staff. I actually looked at that, at that item, and it involves much more than just slurry sealing and so forth. It's complicated. And I think you could help us out if you actually take a look at it, all right? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Prakash. You may unmute your mic.
Good evening, Mayor, and our great City Council. My name is Prakash, resident of Irvine, speaking on 3.4. This is truly a historic day. The residents of the City of Irvine deserve a library as grand, as innovative, and as incredible as the City of Irvine itself. It's why you all voted 7-0 on this topic in June. Many people have been working tirelessly for years on this project, and have lately ramped up their efforts. The friends of the main library at Great Park, now both hundreds of supporters and dozens of volunteers, were working to find creative solutions to bring this library to life. For many residents across the city, a library is the most important resource the City of Irvine can provide. And the Great Park is the ideal place to have this. South Irvine does not have a library, and most of the new housing development is coming online in this area. 6 million people already visit the Great Park annually. As new features at the park come online, more and more people will visit. Many families across Irvine will spend their evenings and weekends at the Great Park. The Great Park is the only site in Irvine where we can start with a blank slate and build something truly historic, something we can all be proud of. And the Great Park residents have already said they're willing to provide financing, which would place no further tax burden on the other residents of Irvine. The city needs 220,000 square feet of library space. We can get half of this space done at one site within the next few years. This library will serve as a hub to libraries across the city. Let's please, please, make this the utmost priority and focus our collective efforts on getting the money. And while we're looking for the money, let's take Councilmember Tracider's suggestion to start the design process, and let's start tomorrow. The residents are here to help, all of us, we're here. Let's get this done, and let's get the other libraries done too, and let's get it done together. Thank you, Councilmember Carroll, for your passion and for bringing this forward. You've touched a lot of us here. And thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for all your support.
Our next speaker is Anita B. Anita, you may unmute your mic, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you all. We appreciate you putting your personal lives aside, you know, and to be here for the entire day. I think some of us have been on the phone with you since the afternoon, so first of all, thank you for that. I've had the pleasure of speaking with every single one of you on the dais about the importance of a library, not just for our own community in Great Park, but very much for our neighbors across Irvine. Everyone is super excited about it, and we all remember the June 24 unanimous vote where every single person here raised their hand and said, count me in. I am ready to make history, and I'm ready to have a great chance at making a legacy that our families can enjoy for generations. So, we cannot thank you enough for the stand that you're taking to say, let's put funding behind our promise. We committed to that back in June, we know that there's some transitions happening with city managers, with the summer recess, and we know that things change and come and go, but this is the meeting we've been waiting for to really cement it, and cannot wait to hear another unanimous vote of yes, a vote of confidence in saying, we're going to move in the right direction. And we've got your back. I know Sean and Pete, Julie, Chris, the entire team are confident that they have all kinds of neighbors from around the city, University Park, Katy Wheeler, from north, south, east, west, all of us are coming together with friends of the library to say, how can we help? So, you can count on us, we're looking forward to counting on you in just a few minutes when the vote happens. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer C. Jennifer, you may unmute your mic, you have 90 seconds.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everyone, thanks for giving me a chance to speak today. I am here online because I believe it's time for our Great Park Library, and I believe it's now, not years down the road. Irvine is known for excellence in education, innovation, and quality of life, but we don't have a true central library, a cultural and educational cornerstone of Great Park that our city deserves, that our community deserves. If you can just imagine a place where students can gather safely after school to explore ideas, where families can spend weekends attending storytime and cultural workshops, where seniors can connect through book clubs, and entrepreneurs can work in collaborative spaces that inspire creativity, the demand is here, guys. Our population is growing faster than ever than our shared spaces, schools are crowded, coffee shops overflowing with students and remote workers, and yet, we don't have our library. Our library is an investment, not an expense. It fuels education, literacy, inclusion, and even local business growth. And in a city like ours in Irvine, that prides itself on being forward-thinking and world-class, and it's missing a piece here in our community. So, let's make this happen, let's not wait another decade, let's show our children, our neighbors, and our future residents, that Great Park doesn't talk about community, we build it. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Melissa Cabrera. Melissa, you may unmute your mic, you have 90 seconds.
Hi, I'm just hopeful that you guys could vote yes on this, I took earlier, sorry. I really think this would help for the health and the safety of not only the residents, but the two very heavily populated schools directly in this area. It'll help clean it up and seal it, and I think it would be really, really great if you guys could vote yes on this one. Thank you.
Our next speaker is telephone number 819. 819, you may unmute your mic, you have 90 seconds.
Hi, my name is Mike, I'm a resident of Great Park, father of two kids at Katy Park Elementary. I just wanted to, the sentiment on 3.4 and continuing to progress, the library in Great Park, it's within miles, would be within miles of a number of schools, and support the community in a number of ways. And as many of the callers have already said in the previous comments, I'm sure it's going to be for Irvine to really take hold of our library future now that we own our destiny, and really be a shining example of what can happen when, you know, a great city takes charge and creates a great library system. Thank you.
How many more do we have?
One more.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is telephone number 457. 457, you may unmute your mic, you have 90 seconds. 457, can you hear us? No response, Mayor, that is all. But if I may, just really quickly, for the record, item number 3.5, there's an errata memo before you, and in that errata, it's related to the Irvine Chambers Grants Program. There's an additional recommended action, and I just want to make sure that when the consent calendar is approved, that it includes that additional recommended action as part of the motion.
All right, can you read the additional recommended action?
Happy to do so. Again, this is for item 3.5, Irvine Chambers Grants Program. The additional recommended action is to authorize a budget adjustment to reallocate $250,000 for the Irvine Chambers Grants Program from Irvine Recovery Plan Funds.
All right. Does that require any explanation, Mr. Crumbey?
I don't think so, unless you want to pull it from the consent, we're happy to present a staff report.
All right, all right, thank you. That concludes our public comments on the consent calendar. At this time, are there any requests from council members to withdraw any items from the consent calendar for discussion? Councilmember Carroll?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. If we could remove 3.4 and 3.5.
3.4, 3.5, and that takes care of your request also. Thank you. All right, I'll move the balance of the consent calendar, that's items 3.1 through 3.10, with the exception of items 3.4 and 3.5.
Second?
My motion is seconded by Councilmember Tracider. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Councilmember Goh?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez-Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Tracider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai?
Yes.
And Mayor Agron?
Yes.
370.
Very well. Item 3.4, Councilmember Carroll, you pulled that from the consent calendar.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just want to speak briefly to this. First, I want to thank the staff team and the folks, Julie and Chris, and the entire library team, as well as Sean, for putting this together and bringing this back, which is, again, sort of the implementation regarding a library in the, in the, in the Great Park. We're excited to kind of see things as they unfold, we just wanted to thank you about that. One other aspect, too, I would just, unless someone objects, would be, I'd like to incorporate the, the City of Irvine, just really adjacent to that whole site, just recently acquired from the Federal Aviation Administration, the air traffic, the historic air traffic control tower. We talked about that a little bit this morning at the, at the Cultural Terrace groundbreaking. And in terms of that, and sort of the library, it would be great if we could kind of fold that into the memorandum. I don't know if you had any thoughts on that, Sean, in terms of the sighting, and if that worked?
Happy to do that. I think some of the uses that we've been discussing for that control tower were previously maybe even discussed within the library, so it's directly related to that item and happy to fold it in.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And again, I wanted to thank the library team, library services team, and Chris, thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Do you want to move that item?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I moved that accordingly, someone would second that.
I'll second it. Been moved by Councilmember Carroll, I seconded the motion. Would the clerk please call the roll on item 3.4?
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Councilmember Goh?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez-Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Tracider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai?
Yes.
Mayor Agron?
Yes.
Carrie 70.
Thank you. That takes us to item 3.5, also pulled by Councilmember Carroll. Would you like to address that now?
Thank you, and happy to move the item as well, Mayor. I just wanted to ask our city manager, this came up, and there was, at least, as I went through the item, there appeared to be, just want to confirm the, the understanding that we previously, as a council, authorized the recovery money, the COVID money, with regard to these specialized chambers, the request from the Irvine Chamber came in sort of separately subsequently, but that no, this is not being, these funds for this program and the staff report are not being with the errata, or with, in its totality, are not being drawn from general fund taxpayer dollars, but, but really from, from specific recovery dollars, if you could just elaborate, just to confirm.
That's correct, thank you for the question. Yes, and errata was issued earlier today to clarify the source of the funding being recommended by the staff, and it is a repurposing of Irvine Recovery Funds monies that were originally set for bridge housing, and we're asking the council to repurpose those funds to this particular use going to the chambers.
Great, thank you very much, thanks for clarifying that, I appreciate that.
And no general fund.
And no general, yeah, thank you. Okay, well, I would move the item, Mayor. Thank you.
I'll second the motion. There's a motion by, oh, I'm sorry. Yes. It'd be Councilmember Martinez-Franco. Go right ahead.
My question is actually about the funds that are getting allocated, not for the Irvine Chamber itself, but for the additional chambers or nonprofit organizations. If you can go over that timeline, so people can see it right now, if they are watching, so they can be on the lookout of those grants. And I also want a little bit of explanation on what are, what are the safeguards the Irvine Chamber is going to have in choosing these nonprofit organizations. As you may recall, I was part of the subcommittee that distributed the first round of COVID money to nonprofit organizations, and I know a lot of these nonprofit organizations didn't have all the requirements. So, the grading system that you gave us to the subcommittee was really great, and I just want the Irvine Chamber to be prepared with all these safeguards that we can provide them in order to have these grants going to the nonprofits that are most needed. Thank you.
Would staff respond to that, please?
Yes, I'm happy to address those questions specifically, and then if you would like me to, I can go ahead and continue through the presentation that we prepared. In terms of the timeline, that hasn't been finalized yet, but pending council direction to move forward with the grants program. We've spoken to the Greater Irvine Chamber about a timeline that consists of starting outreach approximately in January, that could always start sooner, but we wanted to project out in a realistic manner to ensure that they had time to create a framework that abided by the framework we set forth for them. So, starting outreach in January, and potentially having award announcements in April, followed by funding agreement execution in May. So, we want to ensure there is a robust amount of time to be able to advertise the opportunity, make sure folks are aware and prepared for the various requirements of the program. In terms of eligibility, for the local grants component of the program, which is for the smaller chambers, if you will, that's up to $50,000 total. The eligible organizations, as you mentioned, include chambers of commerce, business and industry associations, small business and entrepreneurship support organizations, essentially nonprofits providing services or direct financial aid to Irvine businesses. And I'm glad you mentioned the IRP grants program, because the loose framework we've already started working on is based on that program, also a little bit inspired by the community partnership grants. So, pulling from that, the eligible uses are the same for the grant funds, small business assistance programs, and/or direct assistance provided by grantees to Irvine-based small businesses for job and resource navigation, rental assistance, and/or general operating expenses. And then in terms of that Irvine focus, making sure it stays within the Irvine community, we have a variety of criteria that we will be proposing within the funding agreement framework with the chamber. But to sum it up, all the grant-funded events, programs, and services must have a clear Irvine focus, be readily accessible to Irvine-based businesses and residents, and be provided at no cost to Irvine-based businesses and residents.
Thank you so much. I just think it's a great idea to keep on helping these small business chambers, ethnic chambers. I witnessed their progress and how much they've done with all the money that we provided back then. And I know, like, women are the ones, like, women and women of color are the ones that are the least amount of people who get less grants for financial. So, having those ethnic chambers still present in this diverse city, I think it's very important just to keep on propelling these entrepreneurial talents that we have in the city. Thank you.
Anything further?
No, with that, I can just move, or just support the item.
Are you seconding my?
Yeah, I'm seconding.
Thank you.
To go back.
I've lost track of the bidding here, so was there a motion and a second?
I have the motion made by Councilmember Carroll, and you seconded the motion.
All right, yours was a comment. With that, I see no further requests to be heard regarding item 3.5. The motion is properly before us, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Councilmember Goh?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez-Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Tracider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai?
Yes.
And Mayor Agron?
Yes.
Carrie 70.
Thank you. That concludes our consent calendar, and allows us now to move to the public hearings portion of our agenda. These These public hearings are conducted pursuant to state law in a little more official way that involves, with respect to these items, opening a public hearing, taking comment, and then moving forward. So mindful of that, let's turn to the first of our two public hearings, both of which should be mercifully brief. I'm going to turn to our city clerk, Mr. Peterson, to identify item 4.1 by title and subject.
Thank you, Mayor. 2025 California Building Standards Code adoption.
Thank you. With that, I'll declare the public hearing now to be open, and we turn to our staff to please identify yourselves and tell us what is before us.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I'm Jesse Cardoza, Deputy Director of Community Development, and with me is the Deputy Building Official, Claudia Landera Sobai. And tonight, we bring before you staff's recommendation for the adoption and amendment of the 2025 California Building Standards Codes. This is a routine regulatory process, so we will be, we will be brief. Thank you. The California Building Standards Code is actually a framework of codes, 12 in total, some of which are listed in that first bullet there, that are meant to safeguard public's health, safety, and welfare, as well as ensure accessibility, energy efficiency, and sustainability by regulating new construction throughout the city. Again, this is a triennial update. It's required by the state, and it's routine and regulatory. Some significant changes we see in this addition of the code cycle is an introduction of a new part, Part 7, which is the Wildland and Urban Interface Code. It goes hand in hand with the 2025 fire maps we adopted earlier this year, and it regulates construction materials and maintenance requirements in properties located in very high, or in all fire hazards of various zones. We also see changes in Chapter 31 of the Building Code with respect to temporary structures. These changes include some new definitions, requirements, and inspection procedures, all sort of aimed at expanding the flexibility of what we can, how we can evaluate and permit temporary structures and facilities. And then finally, we see a change in the green building standards related to EV charging, specifically in new multifamily and non-residential buildings. We see a shift from what was formerly the requirement for EV-capable charging stalls to now actually installing the equipment at the time of construction. Our recommended approach for the adoption is one of consistency and continuity based on our previous local amendments. We don't have any new amendments to propose, either technical or administrative. It's all going to be continuation of our existing longstanding amendments, and this is, we think, reinforces clarity and community responsive enforcement for our residents and our builders while maintaining a high degree of public safety and code compliance. The items listed here are a few of our, again, longstanding existing administrative amendments, really tailored to the way Irvine does building and safety enforcement, related to permitting and fees, residential remodeling timelines, emergency payment procedures, Board of Appeals processes. Again, these are not new, just carried forward from previous code cycles. Same thing goes for technical amendments. We have very few, and they are all carried forward. Some of the more important ones are Class A roof covering requirements for all new buildings and re-roofs, mandatory yard enclosures, plus one additional pool safety feature, which is actually more restrictive than the state and safer for backyard pools, and then the continued prohibition of underground metallic pipe due to corrosive soils found throughout the city. Same goes for fire code amendments. Nothing new is proposed. These are all carried forward in collaboration with our colleagues at OCFA, and they're all related to fire access roads, fire sprinkler requirements, fireworks, and hazardous materials. Our Irvine Security Code update prepared by Public Safety actually has a few amendments specifically related to rooftop addressing requirements for residential parking structures, some additional surveillance cameras in shared areas of residential buildings, new section on self-storage, expanded emergency access and lighting requirements, and some updated provisions for convenience stores. In terms of public outreach and notice, staff provided both digital and in-person assistance with updated web pages and a targeted outreach to some of our most frequent applicants at the community development counter. No public comments have been received to date, however, staff remains available to assist the public as necessary. In terms of alternatives to consider, council could choose to adopt some or none of the proposed amendments. However, we would then be forced to enforce the state codes as written without our local Irvine-specific provisions. So based on all that, staff's recommendation to council this evening is to adopt a resolution setting forth the findings with respect to our local conditions that justify the proposed amendments and to introduce for first reading the proposed ordinance to adopt and amend the California Building Codes. And this concludes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments? How many requests do we have for public comment?
There are no requests to speak.
There being on, why don't I move things along here by, oh, there we are, Councilmember Carroll.
Oh, Mayor, I was just going to move, do we have to close, I would just move.
We have to close the public hearing first. Moved by Councilmember Carroll to close the public hearing. I'll second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Councilmember Goh.
Yes.
Councilmember Lou.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez-Franco.
Yes.
Councilmember Treceder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai.
Yes.
Mayor Agron.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
All right, why don't I move the following action, adopting the staff-provided resolution and introducing for first reading an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Irvine, California, amending chapters 1 through 5 of Division 9 of Title 5 of the Irvine Municipal Code to establish the Irvine Building Standards Code through adoption of the 2025 California Building Standards Code with local amendments. Is there a second?
A second.
Sorry, who was first? Councilmember Lou. With the motion and the second properly before us, no further requests to be heard. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Councilmember Goh.
Yes.
Councilmember Lou.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez-Franco.
Yes.
Councilmember Treceder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai.
Yes.
Mayor Agron.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
That concludes item 4.1. 4.2, would the clerk please identify, thank you very much, by the way, to our staff. Would the clerk please identify this item by title and subject?
Resolutions finding and determining the public interest in this city for acquiring and authorizing the condemnation of portions of various properties located at the northeast and southeast corner of Jamboree Road and Baranca Parkway in the City of Irvine, APNs 434-011-20-27, 435-192-01-09-12-13-16, for purposes of the Jamboree and Baranca Intersection Improvement Project, CIP 311206.
Thank you. With that, we'll turn to our staff. We ask you to please identify yourselves and proceed with your presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Andrew Pham, Principal Engineer in the Public Works and Sustainability Department. I'm joined here by Lincoln Lo, Deputy Director of Public Works and Sustainability, City Engineer. We are here to present the Jamboree and Baranca Intersection Improvements Resolution of Necessity. The city proposes to construct roadway and intersection improvements at the intersection of Jamboree and Baranca.
Wait one second. I think I have to declare the public hearing now open. Go right ahead.
Thank you. The city proposes to conduct or construct roadway and intersection improvements at the intersection of Jamboree and Baranca. These improvements are intended to enhance traffic operations, reduce congestion, and improve safety for motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians traveling through this high-volume intersection. Currently, the northbound approach to Jamboree at Baranca Parkway consists of four lanes and a dedicated free right turn onto eastbound Baranca. This configuration has contributed to congestion during peak travel periods. Sorry. The intersection improvements at Jamboree-Baranca were identified in the 2010 IBC Vision Plan update, as well as subsequent updates as required mitigation to address impacts from the implementation of Irvine Business Complex Residential Mixed Use Vision Plan and Overlay Zoning Code. The project will add an additional northbound lane through Jamboree, thereby increasing the overall capacity for vehicles traveling through the intersection. In addition, a new dedicated northbound right turn lane will be constructed at Baranca to improve traffic flow and reduce queuing at the intersection. The project will also include enhanced street skate features with new landscaping to be installed along the frontage of businesses located on the east side of Jamboree Road between Beckman Avenue and the commercial driveway immediately north of Baranca Parkway. These improvements are intended not only to relieve congestion and enhance operational efficiency, but also improve the aesthetic characteristic of the corridor. To move forward with the construction of the proposed improvements, the city must acquire both permanent and temporary easements from the property owners, adjacent property owners. 6,518 square feet is needed for permanent easements, while 27,582 square feet is needed for temporary construction easements. The five property owners that are affected are ERD Enterprise, 96 Corporate Park, Thrifty Oil Company, Blackberg, and the owners of Landscape Lot D. The city obtained appraisals of the required property rights and issued formal letters to the property owners on October 2, 2024, and June 18, 2025. Since that time, staff has engaged in good faith negotiations, however, agreements have not yet been reached. This has prompted the need to consider resolutions of necessity in order to secure the property rights required for project delivery. The resolution before City Council this evening is a resolution of necessity under California Code of Civil Procedure 1245.210. Such a resolution must be considered and approved by the legislative body before the city can exercise eminent domain to acquire property. There are four findings required by California eminent domain law. First, the public interest require the project. Secondly, the project is planned to create the greatest public good and the least private injury. Third, the property proposed to be acquired is necessary for the project. Lastly, the required offer under Government Code 7267.2 has been made to the owners of record. Staff believes that these findings are met by the following reasons. The project, the intersection improvements are consistent with the general plan and were identified on the 2010 IBC Vision Plan and reiterated on all future updates of the IBC Vision Plan. The project will relieve regional traffic congestion and improve traffic flow to provide a critical north-south connection across Baranca and Jamboree. The city intends to acquire only those areas that are essential for the construction of the proposed improvements. If City Council approves the resolution of necessity, the city anticipates property acquisition by May 2026 and construction start by September 2026. This timeline allows for coordination with property owners, completion of any pre-construction work, and ensures the project can proceed efficiently once property rights are secured. If the resolution is not adopted, city staff will continue negotiating with the property owners, which may result in additional delays and increased construction costs. This concludes our presentation. Thank you for your time, and we are here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any immediate questions of staff? If not, we'll turn to our city clerk. Are there any public comments that people wish to make?
There are no requests to speak.
No requests to speak. With that, I think we can declare the public hearing closed. Also move, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Treceder. The motion and a second properly before us. Would the clerk please call the roll on closing the public hearing?
Councilmember Goh.
Yes.
Councilmember Lou.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez-Franco.
Yes.
Councilmember Treceder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai.
Yes.
And Mayor Agron.
Yes.
Carry 6-0 of the members present.
All right, I'll move staff's recommended actions. So these would be action items 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Treceder. Any questions, comments? The motion properly before us. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Councilmember Goh.
Yes.
Councilmember Lou.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez-Franco.
Yes.
Councilmember Treceder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai.
Yes.
And Mayor Agron.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
Thank you very much for your help. All right, that takes us to item number 5 on our council agenda, which is council business. Item number 5.1, would the clerk please identify this item by subject?
Agreement for employment of Sean Crumbie as City Manager of the City of Irvine.
Thank you. With that, we'll turn to our city attorney for a presentation of this item.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome, Mr. Melchior.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. I will be mercifully brief on item 5.1. As you know, this is an employment for, the employment of Sean Crumbie as the permanent city manager. The City Council gave direction in the last closed session to pursue that course and to negotiate an agreement with him. We've done that. We need to have a public presentation because the Brown Act says so. In fact, I have to stand here, and we have to do it as part of a business item because the Brown Act says so, and so that will give me an opportunity to walk through the contract. For the record, the staff report goes through the specific sort of key business points for the contract, and the full contract is also attached to the staff report. What I'm about to talk about is consistent with all of that. So the contract has really four key points to it. The first is that it's a three-year renewing contract. What I mean by a renewing contract is that after two years, it will renew to extend its term to three years, so it'll never get down to a less than one-year term remaining. It's what they call an evergreen contract. It's fairly typical with city manager agreements. The annual compensation rate is $434,242. It's the same compensation rate as the city's last city manager. There's been no change to that, other than the normal increases that happen through sort of citywide negotiations for salary increases. And to that end, future adjustments would be along those same lines. When the city's executive management team salaries go up, because they've been negotiated to go up as a group, so too will the city manager's salary. The city manager's benefits are the same as they were in the prior city manager's contract, and by and large, they're the same as they are for the city's entire management team. He does have one additional provision, which was in the prior city manager contract, that allows for the conversion of administrative and personal leaves to vacation leaves, and that can happen on an annual basis. That conversion can be made. And last, the separation period, the so-called severance period, the way it's structured under this contract is at 12 months, and those are the four key terms. There is another term I didn't leave on this slide, but it did appear in the staff report, and it just indicates that, as is true with any city manager contract and any city council in California, the agreement is ultimately an at-will agreement, which means that the city council can perform a performance evaluation of the city manager at any point in time. And that leaves me with the recommended action. I promised brief. Hopefully, I delivered, and the recommended action is, of course, to approve the Hopefully, I delivered, and the recommended action is, of course, to approve the agreement for the employment of city manager between the city of Irvine and Mr. Crumbie.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Mr. Melching? I'll move the, I'm sorry.
Public comments.
No. Are there public comments?
There are, Mr. Mayor. We have two requests to speak.
All right. Why don't we take those first, and then I'll offer a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could call forward Susan Sayer and Ellen Myerson. And we'll start with Ms. Sayer.
Welcome, Ms. Sayer.
Good evening again. Okay. My name's Susan Sayer, and I've lived in Irvine for decades and have experienced a number of city manager appointments. It is my experience that the traditional city manager appointment process consists of an open search process. I've had the pleasure of consulting with Sean Crumbie in his previous city positions. I approve of Sean serving as city manager should he be appointed. However, in the best interests of the city of Irvine and its community members, I do not approve of circumventing the traditional open search process. What is the reason behind the circumvention? Frankly, it greatly concerns me that the City Council and City Attorney are even considering abandoning the open search process. The city manager position is a very important one. In the interest of creating public and city staff trust and confidence in the appointed city manager, I request that the city manager position remain open and that Sean Crumbie continues to serve as interim city manager until the open search process is completed. I sincerely hope that Sean Crumbie will compete in this process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Ellen Myerson.
Welcome.
Good evening again, Councilmembers. Ellen Myerson. Well, me and Ms. Sayer don't agree on this one. I know in the past that it was always, you know, you had an open, you hired a headhunter, and then they got qualified people, and you did a search. It was transparent, and then you hired people, and then, but in the past, they didn't always work out. So that process, even though it's transparent, maybe doesn't work out for the best all the time. I don't see anything wrong with appointing Mr. Crumbie city manager. And the reason is, is because you know Mr. Crumbie. He was assistant city manager. Now you want to make him the city manager. And I approve of hiring people from within, who you know who they are, you know what kind of work ethic they have, and I trust your judgment to hire the right people. So I don't see anything wrong with this. There was an article written by Irvine Watchdog that I read that was complaining about transparency, and I didn't see them making any points that made any sense to me. So at this time, I trust your judgment in Mr. Crumbie. I like the idea that you're hiring him from within, and it is an at-will position. So if it doesn't work out, you can let Mr. Crumbie go, and you can do your search and hire somebody else. So there's really no risk in doing this. I think it's the right move, and I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further public comments?
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Why don't I then offer the motion to approve the agreement as described by Mr. Melching for employment of city manager? This would be an agreement between the city and Mr. Crumbie. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Treseder.
Let me just speak to the motion. First of all, historically, we've had searches, we've had promotions from within to be city manager. The process here was after Mr. Che departed to take the city manager's position in Santa Monica. We appointed Mr. Crumbie for an interim period. It was an interim appointment. How many months ago was that? Four months ago. And yes, we could have done a search. I think the people on this dais at the time felt, and I think their judgment has been proved correct, that on an interim basis, Mr. Crumbie, Sean Crumbie, would demonstrate that he would be an outstanding city manager. And he indeed did demonstrate that during the interim period. I had little doubt that he would demonstrate that. And I think my own judgment in that regard is shared by others at this dais. As Mr. Myerson testified, there are tremendous advantages to promoting from within. I'll just say regarding Mr. Crumbie, he demonstrated himself as an assistant city manager to be hard-charging, super competent, got many projects underway and completed that had lagged for a great period. And I think that trajectory and his interpersonal relations with others, I think he enjoys the confidence of his colleagues. And it's with great enthusiasm that I think we ought to make the permanent appointment of a city manager effective tonight with this contract. I don't know what else I could say, other than let's get on with it. In my view, this is an outstanding appointment that we're making. With that, I'll turn to Councilmember Lou, followed by Councilmember Martinez-Franco, followed by Vice Mayor and Councilmember Mai. Go right ahead, Councilmember.
So before I make my comment, just wanted to confirm with city attorney, there's no legal requirement for us to do an open search, is there?
No.
So, yes, it's great to have an open transparency, but, you know, promoting from within, you are promoting somebody with institutional knowledge, and in a time when the city of Irvine is going through so much, and we have so many projects ongoing, dealing with a lot, I echo Mayor's opinion that Sean has proven to be a very capable steward of this position. And not only that, he has the respect of our city staffs. I've heard from many, many other cities where he has worked that they had seen some his praises, so that's wonderful to know. And the best part of his character, I want to say, is that he truly cares, that you can see that he genuinely cares about the city, about the development. So yes, I really think this is a great choice for us and to move the city ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Lou. Councilmember Martinez-Franco.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say congratulations and welcome again to the city. But I really have enjoyed working with you, and I think you have proven like 100 times that you're the best choice for city manager for the city of Irvine. I know that your approach is very compassionate, and I appreciate that about you, so thank you so much. Looking forward to continuing working with you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez-Franco. Councilmember Vice Mayor Mai.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to echo my colleagues up here. It was unanimous in terms of when we discussed bringing you aboard on a permanent basis. I think with the matter of an executive search firm or a search firm, that's always great to do, but, you know, it's very expensive as well. I mean, at the salary, we're looking at $130,000, $135,000 to conduct a search, I mean, upfront, and then on a retained search, it is very expensive as well. And usually, you want to engage that when you can't find a person or you really have a problem in terms of hiring. In this case, Sean has proven that he is operationally solid and strong. One of the things that really stood out was when I initially met Sean, and he was giving me a tour of the Great Park. And he consistently said that he loved the city and he loved working for the city. And those are the type of people that we want in the city of Irvine. It goes across all levels of staff. And the level of employees that we have in the city of Irvine, we hold people to a high caliber, and that just goes to show how the interview process and the cultural fit. And I couldn't see anybody else that would come from the outside to fit this role. So, I mean, you're a model match for the city. Best of luck, and I'm sure you'll do very well with us.
Thank you. Councilmember Go.
I just had a question for our city attorney. I know typically, a city manager is required to live in the city of Irvine. So are we planning to address that? Is there a clause, a timeframe? What do you suggest legally?
So the provisions that require city manager residency are illegal. And there's a provision in the contract that actually explicitly acknowledges that there is not a residency requirement for Mr. Crumbie.
Thank you for clarifying.
If there are no further comments, there is a motion properly before us. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Councilmember Go.
Yes.
Councilmember Lou.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez-Franco.
Yes.
Councilmember Treseder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai.
Yes.
And Mayor Agron.
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Crumbie. We look forward to getting a lot of good things done with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 5.2. Would the clerk please identify this item by title and subject?
City of Irvine Joint Communities Facilities Agreements and City of Irvine Community Facilities District Number 2013-3, Great Park, Improvement Area Number 11, 2025 Special Tax Bonds.
Thank you. I'll now turn to our staff. Dale, would you please identify yourself and present the item?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dale Boluson, Director of Administrative Services. Also with me tonight is our financing team. We have John Kim from Stifel Finance, and also our financial advisor from Fieldman, Anas Arabian, and Chelsea Redman. So tonight, I'll be talking about the Community Facilities District for Improvement Area 11, 2025 Special Tax Bond. So just a little bit of a background, this bond is associated with the Great Park, and as part of the Great Park Framework Plan, there is a financing plan that requires bond issuance. And this is one component of it. It's for Improvement Area 11. That was formed back in March 2020 at the request of Heritage Fields. And this improvement area is located in the southeastern part of the Great Park Development Area. The proposed financing would generate approximately $134 million for the Great Park Infrastructure and Framework Plan projects. The improvement area consists of 120 acres, 479 attached single-family residential units, and 431 detached single-family residential units, all of which were developed by five national merchant builders. And all the units at this point has been completely built out and transferred to the ultimate homeowners. This is a visual overlay of the area that we are issuing bonds for. At the center of it is Solace Park School. A summary of the bond, as I shared, is a special tax bond. It's a 35-year bond that will mature in 2060, which is the normal term of issuance of these types of CFDs. It's a combination of current interest bonds and capital appreciation bonds. The coupon rates will be determined when we actually finance these bonds and issue the bonds at 5% and 5.25%, and estimated borrowing cost 2.8 million with a true interest cost of 4.93%. Of course, that's contingent upon when we actually issue the bonds. This is an estimate as of September 11. So as part of this, we did want to have some additional capacity in the event that the interest rates change when we actually issue the bonds. So we are asking for authorization for a not-to-exceed amount of $155 million, but we do anticipate it being at $134 million. And these funds would be used to build out the Great Park, as you know about the Framework Plan. So this is just one part of our financing. As part of this development, Improvement Area 11, as there's residential units being built out, there was also a requirement that necessitates payment for expansion of the schools within that area. So we're asking council to approve an agreement as well for a joint community facilities agreement with ISD/USD, so that the funds can also go towards that purpose. And just a reminder, since these are CFDs, there's no obligation of the city. All the bonds would be secured by special taxes levied on the properties for this improvement area. I'm going to have John Kim, he's been instrumental in helping us and his team with the financing, so he's going to provide us a market update.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. John Kim, Managed Director of Stifel. We're serving as investment banker for this proposed transaction to the city. It's good to see everybody. As far as a market update, the timing for going out to market to secure these interest rates for this very important infrastructure financing are very opportune. This chart that we have here show the interest rates that are typically assigned in the municipal bond market. This is what we call the municipal bond index. This is the index by which all municipal bonds, including the city's bonds, are basically sold off of. So theoretically, somebody with a perfect AAA credit rating would receive an interest rate in the marketplace very close to being on top of these rates here. And as you can see, just over the past year, we've seen rates go up primarily due to the change in economic sentiment around the tariffs that were imposed in early April. That caused the market to feel that there was a higher likelihood that inflation would increase over time, and that caused rates to go up. So you can see in the blue line, we have an indicative rate for what the five-year municipal bond index rate would have been. And then in the purple line, we have the 30-year indicative rate. And you could see that just from early January, I'm going to start with the 30-year, it went from 3.90 all the way up to 4.84. Since that time, based on what has happened in the economy, rates have drifted downward, and that combined with the recent rate cut and the market belief that there will continue to be rate cuts toward the end of this year, we do anticipate tomorrow that the Fed is going to be meeting and hopefully announcing an additional quarter-point rate cut to the overnight lending rate. And then there will be one additional meeting in December. And so the market has already assumed two more rate cuts to end the year, and based on that sentiment as well as a concern- And based on that sentiment as well as a concern about rising unemployment, the marketplace has seen rates decline. So with that, if we go to the next slide, this kind of gives you an indication. Because the interest rates that we would set for these bonds are not just one interest rate, this is not like a home mortgage where you only have one interest rate for the 30-year loan, we actually will divide up your financing into individual loans. And each one of those individual loans will have its own associated interest rate. So you can see in this chart, this is a historical measurement of where interest rate ranges have been for the borrowing rates anywhere from years 1 through 30. And the orange line indicates where those interest rates were, what we call the yield curve, in early January of 2025. The green line represents where we are today. And the white bars represent over the last 20 years, how low and how high those rates have been. And so you can see that we're very close to being somewhere in the middle or average of where over the last 20 years, these interest rates have been for each one of these maturity interest rates. So again, I think this is indicative of being a good time to come to market. And I would applaud Mr. Boluson and the city for receiving a very strong credit rating for this upcoming transaction, which that with the also very strong name of the city and its credit profile should solicit very strong interest from Wall Street.
Thank you, John. So as part of this, we've been working over the last couple of months, pulling everything together. Of course, there's a lot of hands that are working on this financing, both from Stiefel's, John Kim's team, and also from our financial advisor, Fieldman, to bring this to you today. So just about the timeline, we did take this bond issuance to the Finance Commission on October 20th, where they unanimously recommend the approval of the bond issuance. Like John shared, we did receive the rating, very strong rating for this bond issuance. And we're here today for your approval. We're looking to price the bonds at around November 13th and looking to close on December So recommendation by staff tonight is to recommend the approval of the JCFA Joint Community Facilities Agreement for City of Irvine CFD 2013-3 and 2013-3B for the Great Park, as well as recommending the approval of the City of Irvine Community Facilities District, 2013-3, Great Park Improvement Area Number 11, 2025 Special Tax Bonds, not to exceed 15 million. That concludes my presentation and I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff or comments from the Dianne? Mr. Peterson, how many requests do we have to be heard?
We have one request via Zoom.
Very well, can we hear from the public commenter, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our speaker is Prakash. Prakash, you may unmute your mic.
Hi, good evening. This is a question for city staff. So understand the financing request is 155 million. I think the residents here would love to understand the uses, the specific uses of funding. Particularly, there was mention of Solis Park Elementary School and Portola High School, potential expansion at those schools. As we all know, there are thousands of new homes that are coming online in the neighborhoods with no real plans to build a new school. At Cadence Park Elementary, they just broke ground on an expansion of about four classrooms on the blacktop area where many kids used to play. And so if the plan is to do the same type of construction at Solis Elementary and Portola High School, I think the residents would love to be aware of that. Thank you.
And that is all, Mayor.
Thank you. Did staff wish to respond to that particular comment?
Sure. So we've been working with Heritage Fields and the mitigation fees, as you know, with more units and more residential units, there's a need for expansion of the schools districts. There is funding for those school districts that's coming from Heritage Fields portion. They are expanding the schools in that area. The details, I don't have them specifically. I apologize. But Heritage Field did share that they are in the process of working with Irvine Unified School District to formulate the plans for that expansion.
All right. Anything further? Yes, councilmember Go, then councilmember Carroll.
I just had a quick question. Just fortunately or unfortunately, I'm one of these CFD pairs living in this district. I just want to understand, as far as bonding 155 million, what would be our net flow through to the taxpayers or the city per se? Like typical transaction fees as far as broker? So is that number, is our net number, is it a higher number, is it a low number?
So the 155 million would include all the transaction costs, the financing costs, the cost of issuance, including the insurance for the bonds as well as attorney fees, transaction costs, that's approximately 2.8 million, most of that being the insurance. That's typically to assure the bondholders that they would receive, you know, full repayment of the amount that they invested. So that's a little bit about the transaction cost that you're asking about.
So the real number would be 155 plus two or three million?
No, that includes the transaction cost as well. Right now, we anticipate it being 134 million, so 155 is the ceiling. So 134 would be based on our market estimate based on September 10th. So once we issue the bonds, whatever the market rate is, if the interest rate goes down, then potentially we can have more funds to go into the development of the park. If the interest rate goes up, then it's the reverse.
Okay. And these are 30-year, correct?
It's 35-year bonds, and those are typical for these types of CFDs. So that's kind of how we built it.
Is there an insurance process that allows us to purchase insurance in terms of what if the bond market drops significantly? Is there a refi type of method that we can enter into?
That's a great question. So with these bonds, we have a 10-year call period. So after 10 years, we have an opportunity to refinance the bonds. And we've done that typically. We monitor the market, the financing team always monitors the market when we come to that 10-year period and we can refinance at that point. And we've done that in the past.
Yeah. So I guess the 35 years, I know our CFDs are kind of brought out to 40 years. What happens in that five-year gap? Do you just refinance, do you just bond another issuance? Because it drops to 80, from 80% to 20, it drops 80% to 20% after the 40 years.
So after the 35 years, there's a requirement when the CFDs improvement areas are formed that establishes that 40-year term before it drops down to that lower rate, which is called a guaranteed amount, which takes care of, you know, maintenance of the infrastructure at that point. During that gap, that gap period, there can be time in the front end that, because it's 40 years from the start of the improvement area. So there can be periods in the front and the tail end that there is excess cash, but normally that just goes kind of to the maintenance and operations of the park.
All right, thank you. Thank you, councilmember Go. Councilmember Carroll.
Great, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Dale, for presenting this. And particularly, I just want to follow up on councilmember Go's questions around the bond offering. So specifically, what are the underwriting fees?
So the underwriting fees is $7.50 per bond. So for this bond, it's approximately $980,000 for the bonds to secure this issuance.
So the underwriting fees to Stiefel on the issuance is about 1 million?
Correct.
Okay. And is that 750, is that considered market rate? Or how do we negotiate that? Or how do we know that that's fair to us?
That's typical of what we see in the market. They do provide us consistent service throughout this whole Great Park financing program that we've developed, and it's a fair market price.
And how often, I mean, I know they've been around a while, so do we have any plans to do sort of like a market check or maybe to look at other providers to come in and do the work? Or I just want to make sure that we're getting the best possible deal, you know, that we're so sourcing all this with Stiefel?
We certainly can do that. They've just been a good partner. They have institutional knowledge in our bond issuances. So we've had them as our partner and we've continued using them because they've really helped us to be able to leverage the market in a great way. There's also the marketing component of it, which they've done an excellent job with.
Great, okay. And who do we use, who's the legal firm doing this?
So we have Retan as our bond counsel. We also have Disclosure Counsel. That's done by Stradling.
Great. And how does that work? Is that just on a fee basis or are you able to negotiate some kind of flat rate fee for them to do these? I mean, I'm just, I just want to make sure that we have from you that we're paying market price for all this because we're sort of a big player, as we've heard in terms of the sheer size. I don't really know what other, I'm sure no other cities are doing anything like this, maybe Anaheim for one of its projects, but no one's doing the value of these offerings, you know, outside of maybe, you know, a large water utility or something like that. So I just want to make sure like the legal, we're not just paying, you know, massively hourly rates without a cap. This is programmatic, right? So like anything from a programmatic basis, I just want to make sure we're getting, we're grinding the providers of this service.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. We do have a financial advisor that always helps us look at the market rates. So that's Fieldman's role. So Anna Sarabian is also in attendance, and she also helps us kind of manage and ensure that we're getting a good value for what we're paying for and that what we're paying for is within market.
Okay, so you feel that we are where we need to be?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks very much, appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. No requested comments? We've exhausted those. I see no requests to be heard. I'll tell you what, I'll move Staff Recommended Actions 1, 2, and 3. These are resolutions not requiring a reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Go. Last call for any questions, comments. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Councilmember Go.
Yes.
Councilmember Lou.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez Franco.
Yes.
Councilmember Treceder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai.
Yes.
And Mayor Agren.
Yes.
Carrie 7-0.
Thank you. Thank you, Dale. That concludes item 5.2. 5.3 and 5.4 have been removed from the agenda.
That's correct, also 5.5.
And, hold on here. Yes, and 5.5 by previous action. That takes us to item 5.6. Would the clerk please identify this item by title and subject?
Consideration of a request by councilmember Treceder to create an LGBTQIA+ Resource Center within the Center for Healthy Living.
Very well. Let me turn to councilmember Treceder, who had requested this be on the agenda. It was on our previous agenda, and she graciously deferred it to this meeting. With that, councilmember Treceder.
Thank you very much. So I'm essentially asking us to consider directing staff to explore an LGBTQIA+ focused programming within the Irvine Center for Healthy Living. So this center, we are working with the HOG Center to create a space for resources to ensure health and well-being within the community. We do have a reasonable component of our residents who are LGBTQIA and will likely need focused care. And in terms of what I'm envisioning, I'm not expecting that the city will provide resources or programming ourselves, but rather that we would facilitate bringing in nonprofits who usually work in this space to help support our LGBTQIA+ members. In particular, I want to consider supporting our youth. So some of the things that we might do is work with the HOG Center to bring in nonprofits who can do programming for, say, youth empowerment and belonging, like study or social spaces and peer support groups, health and wellness, bring in partners who could conduct free HIV testing, prevention and counseling, community and family support, so peer groups for parents, youth and families to build understanding, and so forth. We had done, the city has done a survey of youth recently. We had 1,800 respondents from middle and high school, grades six through 12. Of those respondents, about 12% said that they were self-reported as LGBTQIA+. An accompanying survey, the California Healthy Kids Survey, noted that LGBTQIA+ students were much less likely to report feeling safe at school because of bullying. That they're also more likely to prioritize needing help with transportation, finding employment, and accessing resources tied to well-being. And in a new CDC study, youth who identified as LGBTQIA+ reported higher rates of poor mental health and suicidal thoughts and behaviors than their cisgender and heterosexual peers. They rated learning about self-care and how to maintain their own emotional well-being as very difficult to access. So I'm hoping to fill this need for our community and especially our youth. As I understand, the HOG Center is interested in working with us to partner with this center so that we would not be duplicating efforts, we would be dovetailing our approach. And again, for the most part, I'm imagining that the city will work to bring in nonprofit partners who can do these programs. The HOG Center, right now in Newport Beach, they have a desk dedicated to LGBTQIA+ patients, but they don't do programming or provide spaces or do peer support. That is what I am envisioning the city can help facilitate. And so I am hoping that we might be willing to ask the staff to examine this issue, explore potential partners, and come back within about 90 days or so to let us know whether this seems feasible or not. And thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Do councilmembers have any questions that they may wish to direct to councilmember Treceder at this point? Otherwise, we'll turn to see if there are any public comments. Councilmember Mai.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Treceder, for bringing this up here. And I know this center well. Well, I know the Melinda HOG Center very well, big supporter of them. A number of months ago, Mayor Agren and I, we sat down with their team and a couple board members in discussion of bringing this to Irvine. So the model is great, what they do is great, what they do for the community next to the hospital there and the location is great. One of the things that, you know, I really liked about it is that it was a non-political thing and it was, it was a service for everyone. The way that they modeled, they have the model, their entire organization in that realm is that they have rotating nonprofits that come in. The way they do it is they have them come and they apply The way they do it is they have them come, and they apply, and they get vetted, they get a year, and then they have to reapply every single year. And so, they don't really, they don't really say no to anyone. You know, it could be LGBTQ nonprofit-focused, it could be anything, but it's kind of up to their discretion. And, you know, I really don't, I don't like this, I don't like in any way, shape, or form of government micromanaging, saying that you guys need to do this, or you guys should do this. They already do provide services, as Councilmember Treceder, you mentioned. They have a desk there for LGBTQIA+ individuals. And they could, they could bring in an organization or nonprofit that specializes in that if there was a need for that. I really would like it to be organic and at their discretion versus us telling them what to do about the Center of Healthy Living, because it doesn't, it doesn't even exist yet. We're still in the process of finding a location, and then they should, they should be the ones dictating all the programming versus, versus us, no matter what it is. Because there's programs that they have there for people with diapers, they have a food bank, they have yoga classes. And they base their needs for that center based around the community needs initially. So, I would love to, I mean, I don't, we can suggest for them anything that we want, but I don't think that we should mandate it. You know, it's, it's a great cause. I'm really appreciative of the Melinda Hoag Foundation for even considering our city as a location for this, because I know that they had other cities. I, I really just want to stay away from, from telling them what to do.
Are there further comments? Let me, did, did you offer a motion, actually, Councilmember Treceder?
No, not yet. I typically like to do that after the public comment, but it would be along the same lines of what's in the memo about requesting that the city manager instructs city staff to explore this programming and return in 90 days.
Right. Which I took to mean referring this matter to, do I have the title right, our director or chief director, whatever title we've given to Heather Dionne, who's organizing our whole health and wellness program, which is kind of incoated this time, but I'm very excited about what that program will be when it comes to us fully, fully formed. Is that basically what you were asking, referrals?
Yeah, definitely.
Anything further? Do we have public comments?
We do, Mayor. We have three requests to speak.
Let's hear from those speakers, and then we'll proceed with further discussion at the dais.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could call forward Heidi and Jay Bruce. And we'll start with Heidi.
Welcome.
Five minutes, is this correct?
Five minutes? No, you get three minutes.
Oh, okay.
Three minutes. That's a lot.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Councilmember Treceder, I appreciate your proposal for the LGBTQIA+ Resource Center. It's a kind way to support our community, and as a big supporter of gay rights, I love seeing efforts to help everyone feel included. As we look into this, especially how it connects to local schools like those in the Irvine Unified School District, and transportation like Irvine Connect, I'd like to talk about ways to keep families involved in their kids' care, especially under state laws that allow some confidential student access. IUSD's policies aligned with California laws like AB 1955 often protect student privacy on gender identity without requiring parental notification, which could mean kids access mental health or gender support services independently, potentially leading to pathways with long-term risks if not carefully considered. I'm still learning about different views on youth gender support, including reports like the CAS review, WPATH files, and the HHS review on pediatric gender dysphoria that highlight potential long-term concerns such as fertility issues, bone health problems, or unresolved mental health challenges from hasty medical transitions. And I think bringing in a range of ideas could make our plan even better for, for kids' well-being. I look forward to more talks on this. Maybe we can set up some informal chats, or even bring in experts to share insights on how similar programs have played out elsewhere. Together, we can ensure that whatever we build truly protects and empowers our young people in Irvine, drawing on the best available evidence to support their overall health and happiness. I'm excited about collaborating to get this right for our families and schools. It's an area where folks from all sides, whether MAGA or progressive, can come together to prioritize our kids' long-term health based on solid evidence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jay Bruce. Welcome.
Hello, councilmembers. I just want to say I think this is a good idea. I think there's a very big need for this. I, I'm not LGBTQ myself, but I have classmates who are. And even in middle school, you know, I've had good friends who are LGBTQ and who faced many, a lot of pressure from classmates for, you know, various reasons, including their identities, and some who have even gone as far as to try and take their own lives. So, it's a present, you know, health concern, even in Irvine. And so, I think there is a need here for something like this. And, but the main reason I think this is a good idea is because I've been to some of the Heritage Park Master Plan workshops. Not all of them, but those really discussed what a Melinda Hoag Center for Healthy Living would look like in Irvine. And to me, it did not seem like a really fleshed-out or concrete idea. You know, there were some ideas for like, oh, we could have like yoga programs or meditating for, and, and I think part of it is because they're limited by, if they have one in Heritage Park, then it's zoned for recreation, not like an actual medical facility. So, they're limited to like pretty simple programming. So, I think in light of that, I feel like this proposal adds actual depth to that idea for a center for healthy living, especially have it, if we have it in Heritage Park. And so, I think all around, especially as the mayor pointed out, this isn't a mandate for forcing the Center for Healthy Living to do anything. It's encouraging them to look at this very valid space for community health. So, I think all around, it's a well-thought motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Harvey Les. Harvey, you may unmute your mic.
Hi, I'm Harvey Les, a resident of Irvine since 1976, and a former planning commissioner. I heartily thank Councilmember Treceder for proposing an LGBTQIA+ Resource Center as part of the Irvine Center for Healthy Living, for there is a need, but ever-growing need for such a resource. By the way, LGBTQIA+ is an acronym that stands for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning, intersection, and intersex, and asexual. Some say that A is for allies. The plus is for anyone who feels they are outside the meaning of these letters, comprehensive so they appear. PFLAG, pronounced PFLAG, is listed at the bottom of Councilmember Treceder's memo as a potential partner of the Resource Center, and I hope, an actual partner. I'm a 45-year member of PFLAG and a former longtime board member of the City of Orange Chapter. PFLAG is a nationwide, actually worldwide, FAGA-1C3 nonprofit organization founded in 1973 in New York City. It holds meetings for LGBTQIA+ individuals and their families and friends, both in various stages of acceptance, in an open, welcoming, and supportive environment, where the participants in small groups tell their experiences and fears. For the past year, attendance at our meetings has surged, mainly with parents of transgender children, truly as a result of the Trump administration callously and cruelly removing federal support for the health of transgender children and promoting lives of the most hateful, cruel, and medically and psychologically unsupported variety. Evidence from research studies show that the rate of regret of transgender people who have transitioned is less than 1%, and I would proffer my own opinion, from having met many transgender individuals at our PFLAG meetings, although none having such a regret has appeared, that those regrets, few as they are, probably come exclusively from family ascension and tragically being disowned. Our experience from our meetings is that the kids always know what's best for themselves. Again, thank you, Councilmember Treceder, for bringing this very important service that will be hugely appreciated by the families with an LGBTQIA+ member to fill a need that is largely invisible to the general public.
Our next speaker is Kevin Lee. Kevin, you may unmute your mic. You have 90 seconds.
Good evening, city councilmembers and mayor. I strongly urge you all to support this motion. Irvine lacks a space for LGBTQIA+ folks and allies, and I think this is a great way to encourage a space for everybody. As a queer person myself, it would be really great to see more representation in Irvine. And I'd like to thank Councilmember Treceder for putting this motion on the floor.
Our next speaker is Jeremy. Jeremy, you may unmute your mic. You have 90 seconds.
Yeah, Heather, city council. I support this motion. I think it's vitally important to a class of peoples that have really continued to this day be discriminated against. I just think, actually, this is very timely. If anything, the, the, you know, given our, the current administration and everything surrounding the rhetoric and national politics, I think more than ever, we need to create a space for those in this, you know, protected minority should feel safe as they see many of them are being attacked simply for who they are. So, I support this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mona. Mona, you may unmute your mic. You have 90 seconds.
Hi, again. I absolutely support this motion. I also want to thank mayor and vice mayor for having looked into this earlier as well, which tells me that this is city council that's open to protecting the mental health and the health of our kids. So, that's all I wanted to say. So, thank you.
And that is all, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Treceder.
Thank you. I appreciate all the comments, and I'm very happy to consider incorporating these suggestions into the final plan. So, at this point, I'd like to make a motion to request that the city manager instructs city staff, especially the director of the Health and Wellness Program, to explore LGBTQIA+ focused programming for the Irvine Center for Healthy Living. I ask that they return to the council within 90 days with an implementation plan that includes potential partnerships and programming that we have discussed. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lou. What I'd like to do is maybe if we could invite Director, if that's the proper title, Director Heather Dionne.
Health and Wellness Director Heather Dionne.
She is the Director of Health and Wellness. All right. We've got it right then. Why don't you?
Good evening.
Yeah. Why don't you just take a moment, if there are people at home listening? I know you are embarked upon a remarkable undertaking. Council, I'm sorry, former city manager Oliver Chi actually helped develop a vision for what appears to me to be perhaps the most ambitious municipal health and social support system, trying to integrate all of the social support needs of our community, as well as the mental and physical health needs and so forth, into one integrated health and wellness department. It's a huge undertaking. I was a legal counsel for the State Senate Health and Welfare Committee many years ago, and I got a, a real understanding of just how broad that title is, what it encompasses in terms of support and uplift for our society, and certainly that applies in the context of our municipality as well. So, do you want to maybe just take a moment to say what is your charge? And should this motion be adopted, what it would mean to you in terms of kind of a receivable, and how that might evolve into something more substantial later?
Sure, of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. You know, the City of Irvine's Office of Health and Wellness is intended to provide access to services, resources, programming, and care. Along with that charge, I believe that it is our responsibility to break down barriers so that people can get the resources that they need. And oftentimes, that takes creativity, it takes immense collaboration between the city and our community partners, it takes a lot of, I think, listening to the community about what they need and what they want, and how we can deliver those services. And I think in this last year, we've, we've made great strides in doing so. We, we have a long ways to go, and it continues to evolve. I, I think the space that the Office of Health and Wellness and where we work is really this interesting interception between social services, physical health care, behavioral health care, and the infrastructure that we build around that, and that includes housing. And so, that is also a part of our charge within the Office of Health and Wellness. So, you know, the, the Center for Healthy Living, this community hub that we're envisioning, I think embodies all of these, these ideas and this vision, allows the community to come together, and allows the Office of Health and Wellness to meet the community where they are. And so, I see it as, as just a fundamental piece of what we are trying to achieve.
Thank you. The generous offer by Hoag to underwrite basically perhaps an expanded version, a slightly different version of the Melinda Hoag, I think it's called the Health Center, isn't it?
The Center for Healthy Living.
Center for Healthy Living in Newport Beach, with which I'm somewhat familiar. And the idea is Hoag would be bringing it here. We haven't identified yet a physical place for that. We've got some, I think, exciting prospects in the works. We haven't actually entered into an agreement with the Hoag folks, have we? Mr. Melchien?
I think I can, I can take that answer. I think that we're having discussions and negotiations and looking at sites, and I'm very hopeful that we'll have some details ironed out to bring back some sort of an MOU, an agreement, in the very early part of next year.
All right. Well, I'm assuming if and when, more of the when, we work out an agreement with Hoag, there are going to be opportunities for space and the delivery of services that will be the envy of many organizations, nonprofit and otherwise, to address these unmet needs. the envy of many organizations, nonprofit and otherwise, to address these unmet needs. And I can think offhand of, you know, childcare, seniors, veterans, veteran services. We don't have a veteran service center in the city. We should, but we don't. And so I think there's going to be a lot of healthy competition for space with nonprofits, and all that has to be worked out with Hoag. So this motion is fine as far as I'm concerned. I think putting a 90-day return to us on it, I'd just feel more comfortable getting this item and basically a briefing, a public briefing, on where we are with respect to the entire Health and Wellness Department, that whole huge organizational effort. I'd like to see something by springtime of next year. And what I'd be a little concerned with about 90 days is that other nonprofits are going to see this as a need to put a marker down right now and will create kind of a stampede that's premature. That's all. That's my thinking in terms of just how we deal with this and other requests that are apt to follow. I'd just prefer we kind of refer them to you, and you give us frequent briefings about these kinds of things.
If I might offer up maybe a potential solution?
Yes.
When we come back with details related to those conversations with Hoag in the interim time, Heather can have conversation with them about the things that they desire to provide and see what kind of nonprofits we can partner with and maybe provide an update at that time when we come back in the early part of next year. And happy to follow up with a broader health and wellness, larger-scale update immediately behind that.
That's fine. Gee, it's been a long time since we've had an update, at least that I have had an update on where things stand with the Hoag matter. We do have some pending decisions here in the city that this council will make regarding physical space, and all that has to be worked out. So there are just so many aspects to this, but if it's referred, but without a reference to the timeline, you're just going to come back and report to us, right?
Yes.
Okay. Fine. All right. Let me turn now to Councilmember Martinez Franco, followed by Councilmember Lou, followed by Councilmember Mai.
Thank you. I have heard for the past week how the initiatives are grown organically in everywhere. If they did, it wouldn't be a need for us to be asking these kind of initiatives to be pursued. So I think we see that there is a big need. I do thank Councilmember Treceder for bringing it up, and this is why we need a dedicated person in our city that is looking with equity and diversity and inclusion in all our initiatives that we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lou?
Well, I want to first thank Councilmember Treceder for bringing this up. Having family members and witnessing family members not being able to live there as their authentic self in the LGBTQ community, I understand the importance of creating that space, that safe space. And I hear what Vice Mayor Mai was saying, that he didn't want to see a mandate on the private entity on things like this. But the issue here is that residents or folks in the LGBTQ communities often don't feel safe enough to come out and seek that help. And so it is upon us as decision-makers to create proactively that space for them to feel safe and provide the service and support for them. I agree with what City Manager had discussed, that maybe what we should do is to simultaneously talk to all the other nonprofit or other groups with other interests and to make sure that we include everybody and that will make sure that we provide the services that Irvine residents need. So that's just my different perspective, and I will support this as I offered the second. So thank you for offering this or bringing up this issue.
Thank you, Councilmember Lou. Councilmember and Vice Mayor Mai.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, add some commentary on this. I, you know, I understand this, where it's headed here, but, I mean, I've been in this space for, you know, 10-plus years, helping nonprofits, owning nonprofits, starting nonprofits. We just recently had Nonprofit Week, and we had 3,000 nonprofits. We have 3,000 nonprofits in the City of Irvine, and it's going to be a bum rush to get into the center when it does happen. It's not so much about saying no to this because of whatever. It is just the ink is still, the ink hasn't been signed. We're still in negotiation stages with them. They haven't fully said yes to us on this at all. And I, you know, I'm concerned that when we start coming at them as a government entity and saying, hey, we want this, no matter what it is, it could be any nonprofit that or any effort that we want to advocate for, when you start telling people that, hey, we want you to come to our city, we want you to invest millions of dollars, we want you here, but you got to do what we want right now, or you should take the direction that we want you to take. I believe it should be a partnership. I think we should get the deal done first with them. They already have resources, and they will provide resources, and they have an entire vetting process. There's a whole entire model for the organization. You know, there's a board. They have to go through a pitch. They have to go through a competition before they're even in it. And, you know, we can, it's okay to tell them that we want something, but we shouldn't put it on paper yet. I mean, the deal's not done with the center. I literally just want them to be here first before we do anything else. So, you know, I'm going to be against this just because, I mean, there's nothing yet. There's nothing here yet. We don't even have the building yet. We're still talking about which building to choose. I mean, we can do anything we want within our city and within our scope of, that we have power over. We don't have any power over this organization. I mean, Melinda Hoag, they're being kind enough to offer this to us and offer the millions of dollars and offer the resources. Let's just let them do what they want, and we can give them guidance, but, you know, to sort of mandate and push them to wherever they want to. I mean, this can open the doors to a lot of discussion with a lot of different groups. And some people might say it's unfair to this group or another group. So that's my just last commentary on it.
Thank you, Councilmember Mai. Can I make a suggestion? There's one word here that I think, if changed, may help us and bring us more together. The idea of our creating an LB, I'm sorry, LGBTQIA+ Resource Center. The idea of our creating a resource center is a little troubling. It's like starting from scratch. I assume there's a number of nonprofits that exist already that serve as resource centers If the word were just to explore, just to explore it with, which I think addresses your concern to Councilmember Mai, to explore this with the Hoag folks as well as our own Director of Health and Wellness, explore the creation or attracting or placement of a resource center, I think that's a little different from our creating it ourselves from scratch. I think you might enjoy broader support with that word, but that's just my suggestion. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm queued up to speak next.
Thank you, Councilmember Treceder.
Thanks. So I take the mayor's suggestion, and I just want to point out that my motion did indeed use the word "explore." So I'll just read the motion again.
Okay.
I respectfully request that the city manager instruct city staff to explore LGBTQIA+ focus programming for the Irvine Center for Healthy Living.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further? All right. With that, I think there's a motion properly seconded, a motion that is before us. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carroll?
No.
Councilmember Goh?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Treceder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai?
No.
Mayor Agren?
Yes.
Carries five to two with Councilmember Carroll and Vice Mayor Mai voting no.
Thank you, and we'll look forward to a progress report with the department and so forth sometime early in the new year. All right. Thank you very much. We now move on to the next item, item 5.7. Would the clerk please identify this item by title and subject?
Consideration of a Request by Councilmember Martinez Franco to Discuss a Proposal for a Citywide Women's Conference in March 2026.
All right, Councilmember Betty Martinez Franco, you're on.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'd like to talk about an opportunity for Irvine to turn our values into visible action and to reaffirm our commitment to equity and inclusion by advancing the goals of the United Nations Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women Known as CIDA. I'm proposing to host a women's conference to empower women in our city, connect them to resources, and bring our CIDA resolution to life. Next slide. A little bit of background. In March of 2021, this council adopted the CIDA resolution to eliminate discrimination and support of the full participation of women and girls in every area of life. That resolution was a powerful statement of our city's values, fairness, inclusion, and the protection of human rights. It told the world that Irvine stands for equality, but our resolution is just the beginning. What we do next defines our leadership. Next slide. The CIDA framework calls on cities to remove barriers that limits women's participation in social, economic, and political life. A local women's conference directly supports that mission by providing access to training, mentorship, and visibility. It helps women gain the tools they need to participate fully, to lead, and to shape the future of this city. I'm respectfully proposing that the city host an Irvine Women's Conference in March 2026, timed with Women's History Month, as a way to implement our CIDA commitments and strengthen the connection between local government, community, and opportunity. Next. Since the adoption of the resolution, there have been no formal programs or initiatives to put the resolution into action locally. Next year marks the fifth anniversary of that promise, and it's the perfect moment to translate our words into measurable outcomes and to bring our community together and show that equity looks in practice. Next. So here are a couple of statistics that shows the disparity between the median of what men earn versus the median income of women. This makes it harder for women to be able to afford the rent, the fact that men earn more money than women still in this century. Next slide. The conference objectives. This conference will empower women through education, networking, and leadership development. It will raise awareness of health, safety, and wellness resources that improve women's quality of life. The focus areas align directly with the CIDA principles of health and wellness, career unemployment opportunities, financial education and independence, and domestic violence prevention and awareness. All these areas are the foundation to build stronger families and a more inclusive economy. Next. So what a conference for women's matters. There's research that shows that women-focused conferences have a measurable impact. Conferences help women access mentorship and professional relationships, and offers practical workshops that strengthen leadership, negotiation, and financial skills. They also create safe, inclusive spaces where women feel seen, supported, and empowered to lead. And the next slide. And this is what I propose as a motion. This will be a motion, actually, before the motion, I would like to hear a discussion. But you have it in front of you, and we can initiate a discussion if you would like.
Before we turn to public comment, will I can see, do we have, how many requests do we have for public comment?
We have one request to speak.
All right. Why don't we take that public comment first, and then we'll take comment from the dais here.
Thank you, Mayor. Our speaker is Luette Forrest. Luette, you may unmute your mic.
Thank you. I am serving as Councilwoman Martinez Franco's Sustainability Commissioner, and we were speaking Monday about the climate change proposal, but we were also talking about this action. And from my life's arc, I was a, I graduated from veterinary school in 1980, and I certainly could talk for several hours on things that were very discriminatory. And just one thing, when I graduated, the Michigan Veterinary Medicine Association sent us a "Welcome to the Brotherhood of Veterinary Medicine" letter. When I joined the faculty here at UCI as a researcher, I was terminated when I was on maternity leave in 1989, and so I've had some lived experience with discrimination as a woman. Certainly, there is another kind of climate change in our city and our world right now besides the environmental one. And I think Councilwoman Treceder and others who have spoken to all the things we're having to push back against, and this is certainly another facet of pushback to not let the rock roll backwards down the hill on human rights of all sorts, whether it's immigrant, or women, or people that have gender differences. So I just wanted to say I support this effort to protect everyone's rights and empower women and besides the, besides climate change of the other sort. So thank you. So thank you.
Mayor, we have one more request, a late request from IR. IR, you may unmute your mic. You have 90 seconds.
Hi. So this agenda and the previous agenda, I think, both clearly show the need to have a permanent city department that handles or cares for and looks over and takes initiatives for diversity and inclusion. So I'm all for both agendas, and I think this is a great idea. We urgently need it, and I think it would be so much better and more effective, and someone to also have accountability, to have a permanent position to really gather all these efforts into one. That isn't through the revolving door of commissioners and who knows what nonprofits, all these things that keep changing. We need someone who's stable, permanent, the department, that handles all these data and needs, and reaches out to people that need it. So it just, all of it shows we need something that's much more comprehensive and stable and permanent. Thank you.
And that is all, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there, here we are. Two council members wish to be heard. First, Councilmember Carroll, followed by Councilmember and Vice Mayor James Mai, followed by Councilmember Treseder. By the way, let me ask, was there a motion on that last slide, a specific motion?
Yeah, if we can put back the last slide, please. So if, well, I can do the motion right now. "I move a motion to direct staff to plan a women's conference to be held in March 2026 in alignment with Women's History Month and the city's 2021 CIDA resolution. Staff shall explore potential conference themes that align with the goals of the CIDA framework and reflect the needs and aspirations of women in the urban community. Identify possible community partners, sponsors, and organizations that could collaborate in planning, funding, and implementing the event. Develop a preliminary budget not to exceed over $40,000 from the general fund, and logistical framework outlining anticipated costs, potential funding sources, and proposed venues." And that's it.
Second?
Seconded by Councilmember Treseder. I just want to make sure I heard it correctly. The, there was a cap on the expenditure for the entire conference. Did I hear it right, $40,000? Very well. Good. So let's take comment here. Councilmember Carroll was first, followed by Councilmember Mai.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Let's be very brief. I just want to, I want to thank Councilmember Martinez-Franco for bringing this forward. I wholeheartedly support it, and I really do appreciate the way that you framed it, Councilmember. CIDA, you know, I voted for that five years ago. The mayor next to me voted for that. That took a unanimous vote. We were a five-member council. Those are the two members of the city council that voted for that. I think it's also fitting that we heard from Rima earlier, our public commenter in Global Hope 365. That kind of, to me, sort of like, it's interesting. We got two bookends of what you're proposing here. You know, you have, or really have CIDA on the middle, and then you have Rima coming here earlier, talking about child marriage and the fact that the state, you know, and I don't have much context with elected officials, the state officials that represent this area, but my colleagues, you up here, you do, and you need to talk to them. And I'll talk to our state senator, but the fact that there's no minimum age for marriage creates an incredible imbalance that, you know, I can't even imagine, but, you know, the child marriage and human trafficking issues that Rima and Global Hope 365 focus on are just so paramount. And then on the other side is this bookend of your conference proposal. I think it's wonderful. Okay? I'm not interested in gender differences or any of that stuff. For purposes of this item, with all respect to that, and I respect those differences, this is about women. And my only question through the chair is, can fathers participate in the conference?
Absolutely. I think men should be part of the conversation. Men have a big responsibility to empower women as much as women need to support men. So, yeah.
Great, well, thank you. I know I talked to you offline about it, but I'm just really excited to support it. I'm sorry I wasn't able to get the second in as fast as my colleague did, but I would have been right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carroll, Councilmember Mai, followed by Councilmember Treseder.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Martinez-Franco, for bringing this up. I think it's a great initiative. I think in the city of Irvine, we have a lot of great leaders, women leaders, who are CEOs, leading organizations, a lot of business owners, small business owners, veterans, public servants, like we saw today, that have been with our city even for a number of years, and I think that it's a great opportunity to bring light to many different themes, and I look forward to seeing what themes are going to come out from this. And I think you're selling yourself short with $40,000. I think you can get a lot of sponsorships and make this even bigger. I'm sure you'll be a part of that, so I think it's going to be great for the city and for the community.
Councilmember Treseder.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I really, I appreciate Councilmember Martinez-Franco's proposal. I think it's really important. I think you just cannot go wrong, bringing women leaders together and helping them network, and I'm sure that we'll see, you know, businesses coming out of this, and tech, and all sorts of great developments for the city. And I also agree that I can imagine that there'd be a lot of interest in supporting this financially, and we may not need to bear even as much as you've proposed. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carroll, again.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, just one other thing, not to change the motion or anything, but it just dawned on me as Councilmember Treseder was speaking, there's another potential opportunity for you to consider, or maybe staff to consider, is this also will be the 250th anniversary of our country. So there's a, this sort of a historical arc thing, maybe that can be considered as part of the conference, of the progression and where we are today and the progress. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Carroll. Let me just ask, if I might, kind of the vision for this, and maybe with a little specificity. This would be a one-day conference here at City Hall at the Civic Center?
Yes, and I mean, the purpose is to offer breakout sessions across the City Hall, and if we can just bring businesses, I mean, an expo, it always bring money, you sell table in, so if we can bring businesses, women-owned businesses here, I think that will be a great benefit for our community.
Okay. All right. In the absence of, let's see, do we, I don't have the actual motion in front of me. Do we have it?
I'm happy to repeat the motion or defer to the maker.
Why don't you, just so everybody's clear exactly what's being approved?
Thank you, Mayor. The motion is to direct staff to plan a women's conference to be held in March 2026 in alignment with Women's History Month and the city's 2021 CIDA resolution. Staff shall, one, explore potential conference themes that align with the goals of the CIDA framework and reflect the needs and aspirations of women in the Irvine community; two, identify possible community partners, sponsors, and organizations that could collaborate in planning, funding, and implementing the event; and three, develop a preliminary budget not to exceed $40,000 from the general fund, and logistical framework outlining anticipated costs, potential funding sources, and proposed venues.
Excellent. Can I suggest in the first reference that you add the words "at City Hall"?
Yes, sorry, I should have put "City Hall," not "proposed venues." Yes.
Okay.
And Mayor, I'm assuming that's okay with the seconder?
Oh, yes. Is that all right?
Yes, that's fine.
Excellent. All right, with that, I think it's time for the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Councilmember Goh.
Yes.
Councilmember Lou.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez-Franco.
Yes.
Councilmember Treseder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai.
Yes.
Mayor Agren.
Yes.
Carrie 7-0.
All right. Regarding this implementation, this next item, 5.8. Councilmember, did you wish to take this up now, or should we push this off to another meeting? That would be my preference, but it's your call.
Yeah, I think I would rather push it to another meeting.
All right. If that's the case, there's somebody standing up in the back? All right. Okay, wait, just hold on. Apparently, some people came intending to speak to this item?
We do have 12 requests to speak in person and one on Zoom.
All right. It's your item, Councilmember.
Well, I will like to hear them. I'm not going to talk about it tonight, but if my councilmembers want to stay, we'll stay to hear them, but I am not going to talk about it.
All right. Well, if I call the item, then we will have public comment. And what?
Mr. Melchien, can we hear the people that came to speak without me speaking about the item?
Yes, you would call the item, take the public comment, defer a report on the item, take public comment on the item, and then when public comment is completed, you can move to continue the item to a later date. And if you're, at that point in time, of course, you need your council colleagues' concurrence. It's an item before the council. If they agree to the continuance, then that's what will happen. If not, the item will move forward.
All right. Sounds to me then operationally, we call the item and take public comment, and then we decide what we do thereafter. Is that correct? Everybody agreed? All right. Would the clerk please identify item 5.8 by title and subject?
"Consideration of a Request by Councilmember Martinez-Franco for an update regarding the implementation status of the Office of Inclusive Excellence."
All right. How many requests for public comment do we have?
We have 14.
14. Let's allow each of the commenters two minutes. And why don't we begin with taking that comment now, unless Councilmember, unless Councilmember you wish to introduce the item further? No? All right, we'll take public comment. Would you please call the first commenter?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could call forward Joanne Slobodian, Myra Firth, Sandy L., Wendy, and there's three Julies. I have Julie, Julie M., and Julie H. And we'll start with Joanne.
Hi again, everybody. Thanks for listening to us. Appreciate very much.
Welcome again.
Thank you. Good evening. Before creating a new Office of Inclusive Excellence, I urge the council to first review what the city already has in place. Irvine already operates multiple equity and inclusion programs. Human Resources ensures equal employment opportunity. The Title VI program prevents discrimination in every service. We Are Irvine promotes multicultural unity. DEI Spotlight celebrates diversity through events. Federal HUD and ESG programs advance housing and language equity, and the Climate Action Plan includes outreach to underrepresented groups. These efforts already embedded in equity principles throughout city operations. Tonight's agenda, including Councilmember Treseder's proposed exploration of an LGBTQIA+ plus center, further shows that inclusion is already woven into Irvine's work. The 2025-27 budget also dedicates millions towards engagement and outreach. Destination Irvine alone receives $3.35 million annually. Those investments already fund DEI Spotlight, We Are Irvine, and community events that bring people together. Question: Why is DEI already in the budget on page 114? Before adding another office, the city should conduct a gap analysis, a simple review comparing what programs already exist to what's actually missing. Without that data, we risk creating overlap instead of improvement. Let's protect Irvine's success by using transparency and evidence, not expansion, to guide decisions. Explore first, decide later, transparency before expansion. Thank you again for your service and for listening. Appreciate you.
Thank you for your comments.
Myra Firth.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for hearing us tonight. We appreciate it. I've been a resident of Irvine for the last 27 years. Let me start by saying I don't think anyone who's speaking, anyone on the council, anyone in the city truly is against DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. I was at the DEI committee meeting last week, and there was a representation that people who didn't feel that the Office of Inclusive Equity was indicated at this point, we were accused of being against DEI. That's not true. The issue is that it doesn't appear that anyone, whether on the committee, on the council, in the city, has a concept of what deficiencies this city has, if any, in the area of DEI. The reason is, in January of 2021, almost five years ago, the DEI committee was formed, and they charged two staff members in Human Resources and the Special Programs Analyst to collect data on the status of DEI in our city. They were supposed to present that data to the DEI committee. We're now in October 2025, almost five years later. That data's never been presented. There's two reasons for that. One, no one bothered to find out the data, to take it back to committee, or they did and found there was no reason to present the data because there wasn't a problem. I don't know which of those is true, but one would expect that before you form an office, you find out what the reasons are for that office. That's not been done.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you for your comments.
Sandy?
Welcome.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank all of you for appointing such thoughtful and well-intentioned members to the DEI committee. However, I am deeply concerned about what transpired at the most recent meeting on October 23rd, which seriously undermined trust in the transparency and objectivity of the city governance process and should give us all pause. At this meeting, both city staff and Councilwoman Martinez-Franco stated as fact that the council had already voted to create an Office of Inclusive Excellence. Both committee members and the public in attendance were confused as it suggested if as it suggested a, if you will it, it will come approach to governance. It was all of our understanding that the council's actual direction was to have the DEI committee explore the concept to establish an office. We were confused. Transparency is the foundation of public trust. When information appears inconsistent and incomplete, it undermines confidence in our civic process. Also, councilwomen Martinez and Franco's comments about, seemed to frame DEI primarily through a single lens. Yet Irvine's strength lies in its diversity of diversities, including racial, religious, cultural, economic, and other identities. When initiatives, staff, or public officials focus too narrowly, they risk dividing rather than uniting this community. Furthermore, the urgency expressed by staff and councilwoman Martinez Franco to move forward with the costly new bureaucratic city office before the DEI committee has fulfilled-
Thank you. Your time is up.
No, just finish your thought.
Oh, thank you. Has fulfilled its council-directed task of exploration. It raises sincere red flags about both process and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Wendy?
Hi. Hello. I actually serve as the vice chair of the DEI committee, so I was there in attendance. And we have seven dedicated, passionate volunteers that serve on that committee. And I just have to say, it's not fair that they should be maligned by any speaker. They give of their time. You have appointed them. You know them. I have gotten to know them. They are all serving at the behest of you, and they really want to do their job. In fact, we want to do more than we have been doing, and we have been waiting for this report and to look into the exploration of the office. As was voted on in November of 2024, the council at the time voted for a timeline, a study to include recommended organizational structure, a staffing plan, budget, utilizing, aligning the adopted DEI resolution, conducting community and stakeholder engagement, listening sessions that are included, including local DEI leaders, nonprofits, cultural organizations, businesses, community groups, interfaith organizations. This is all the minutes from the November 2024 meeting, and none of that has happened, or at least it has not come to the DEI committee to look at it, to give their input. Then we have Representative, Councilwoman Franco come to our meeting and speak for several minutes as if it's a done deal. It's done. Staff has been assigned. And maybe that is the case, but we have not done the exploration. There's been no data gathering. We don't know what we need or what we don't need. We don't just, you don't just throw things at a problem if you don't know what the problem is. We are doing a great job of DEI. Maybe we need more. Maybe we need more equity. Maybe we need more inclusivity. We don't know what we need. And it was voted on, and Vice Mayor, Mayor Agren, you at the time were vice mayor, and you asked staff to come back in 100 days. That 100 days passed. Nothing happened. Now-
Thank you. Your time is up.
Finish your thought.
I'm sorry. One more thing. Representative, Councilwoman Franco's representative to the DEI committee was only just sworn in last month. Maybe that's why we've been waiting. So it only just appeared, and yet we have not been able to provide any feedback, and there's been no reporting. So explore first, then create. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Julie?
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. So clearly, we see a theme here, and that theme is the issue of transparency, or as what we're seeing clearly here is the lack of transparency. At the DEI meeting, it was said that there was going to be a hire of a person for the Office of Inclusive Excellence from within the city of Irvine staff, and that someone had already been identified. Who is this person? What are their qualifications? And why isn't it listed in the city of Irvine website as an open position? This lack of transparency is very concerning, and it gives the appearance of favoritism or another agenda. There is no job outline, title tasks that have been written anywhere to what this job actually entails. Is it the city's Irvine's policy to hire people without first determining what their job function is and what the duties are? Please reconsider this resolution as a full council and determine first and foremost, do we need it? And once that has been determined, and if the data supports that we do, then it should be done in a prudent, smart, and thorough manner in which proper research and city laws are honored. Finally, this whole process needs to be and is supposed to be transparent. Transparency is the bedrock for democratic governance. Without transparency, it is no longer a democracy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Julie M.?
Welcome.
Thank you. Inclusion and equity are essential civic values that reflect the character of Irvine. My concern is not with those principles, but with the lack of procedural transparency and governance surrounding this initiative. The record is straightforward. On November 12th, 2024, this council directed staff to explore the process of establishing an Office of Inclusive Excellence. The council did not authorize the creation, funding, or implementation of that office. Yet, recent communications have described the office as if it were already approved, creating public confusion and undermining confidence in the city's process. The council should realign its actions with its original directive and restore transparency. The council should ask the DEI committee with, task the DEI committee with conducting a comprehensive, data-driven assessment of the city's actual inclusion needs. Irvine's DEI efforts should be rooted in evidence and move forward after proper study, community input, and importantly, council authorization. That is how good governance operates. This is how Irvine has earned its reputation as one of the most inclusive, diverse, and integrated cities in America.
Thank you for your comments.
Julie H. And if I could also call forward Carol, Ruben, Robin, Janine, and Stacy.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. The council has heard from me a number of times in my personal capacity. I showed up before as somebody who grew up in this city and who lived here for many years. I'm now here before you in a professional capacity as well. Earlier this month, I left a job of more than 17, or almost 17 years, at the Federal Justice Department and took up a position at J.CAN, the Jewish Community Action Network, because the problem of antisemitism seems daunting in a new way these days. And so I'm here before you in that role because last Thursday at the DEI commission meeting, there was a comment made by councilmember Franco that maybe those of us who are expressing concern about the lack of transparency around the creation of this office and what it might do, maybe we've never experienced racism or discrimination. It's the opposite. I'm concerned because I'm frightened. As a member of the Jewish community, we saw, and I understand that whatever is created is created with good intentions, but in our neighboring city of Santa Ana, for example, we saw evidence come out in a lawsuit about ethnic studies, which should be a good thing. It should uplift every member of the community. There was open discussion behind closed doors, but discussions saying, let's do this at a time when we can exclude the Jews, quite literally. Let's exclude them. And then there was really scary antisemitic stuff that people tried to smuggle into the curriculum behind closed doors, all under the banner of something that was supposed to be good. So our concern is about the lack of transparency. If an office is created, it would conduct its business not subject to the Brown Act. The DEI commission that Irvine has is wonderful. It has open meetings. It takes community comment. An office is something else entirely, and if it's created without an understanding of its scope and what it's going to be addressing, there's a real concern about that. I just want to cite one thing that Governor Newsom that was included-
Thank you. Your time is up.
Finish.
Thank you. I appreciate it. That Governor Newsom just signed into law earlier this month, AB 715, and it cites in the first section that even though the Jewish community is only 3% of California's population, the reported hate crimes, Jewish, or rather, excuse me, hate crimes against the Jewish community are 76% of reported hate crimes against religious groups in California. So the concerns are very real. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol?
And thank you for letting us speak, especially you, Councilmember Franco. I appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you. So what you have before you is a history of the memos that we've had here, just so that there's clarity. The first memo that came through in November spoke of exploring with the DEI committee and listed six different things that the community and the stakeholders should engage in. These were all supposed to be brought back to City Hall in an exploratory fashion in which this would be open to the public for comments and not operational at all, but rather to explore the process of establishing. In the next memo you can see in May 2025 by the council member, again, it was about the process of establishing. But somehow now in October, there's a drift. And now the title of this one from tonight is regarding the implementation status. And those of us who went to the DEI meeting saw the implementation status was what they were talking about. What came out that night that was quite alarming, in addition to funding sources, was that we learned that there was going to be staff already assigned, that there was going to be concerns about Prop 209 in the state of California that does not allow affirmative action, that there were concerns about COVID funds being used already allocated to this when it didn't come through here. And we were also told that it was going to sit under the city manager's office at the DEI committee. Because of that, I took the time to look at the budget to find out if that was true. And now I'm utterly confused. You'll see on your last page of the packet, in the 2025-2027 budget, under the city manager's office, under the People's Operation, the third thing says Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Office. Is that existing already? Is that one that was the? I don't know what that is. The lack of transparency. We either have one or we don't have one. Please, no operational action was voted through. Go back to the research. Go back to what was asked in the first in November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ruben?
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm here because I believe that good intentions should always be matched with good process. There's been talk about creating a diversity, equity, and inclusion office. And while inclusion is a very important goal in our community, it's also a major policy decision, something that significantly shouldn't happen through administrative action alone. It should come through a clear, public vote of this council. When decisions are made without a formal vote, it sends the message that process doesn't matter. But a process is what protects fairness and trust. Every voice on this council represents thousands of people, and these voices deserve to be heard before any action is taken in the city's name. So I ask you, before moving forward on any new office or policy, please make sure it goes through a full council vote. Because accountability isn't a barrier to progress. It's what makes progress real.
Thank you for your comments.
Robin?
Welcome.
So as I said on Thursday at the Diversity Council meeting, I'm a huge proponent of DEI programs. I built a DEI program, gosh, about 20 years ago.
Can I suggest you back up from the microphone just a little bit? There you go.
Sorry. Okay. So I fully support building an Office of Inclusion. But as we hear, the establishment of this program is so murky and so muddy, and the charge is too important to do this the wrong way. And so, Councilmember Martinez Franco, my heart is with you. I agree with you. We have a huge need right now to help vulnerable communities. I spend at least three hours every week volunteering my time, gathering, sorting, and distributing groceries to vulnerable populations. I am with you. What I would suggest is that the funds that have been currently allocated that may be sitting in a budget that might not be used for anything right now, let's take the opportunity to take those funds and distribute them to the people who need them right now. We have SNAP recipients who are about to lose their resources. They are not going to have any more food, and they may lose their housing very soon. Our food pantries are bone dry. If you have money allocated to the Office of Inclusive Excellence, I plea, I beg you to take that money and use it to a short-term solution that will embrace equity and inclusion.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Janine?
Hi. So I'm very confused about what's happening here. I worked a long day. I get up at 5:00 a.m., and I have to get up at 5:00 a.m. tomorrow. And I drank extra coffee just to hear the presentation that I understand is not going to be made tonight. So if there's any way possible, you can keep me and all of these people from having to come back, and please just show us the presentation, I would really appreciate it. Thank you so much. What I did pass out to you is this is Office of Inclusive Excellence has been an issue that's been discussed by this council since 2021. What I think was really important is that there was a presentation by a professor Doug Hayes that talked about a roadmap for how we come up for this Office of Inclusive Excellence. And what I think is most important about this, and was actually the second part of the second of the motion in 2024 that hasn't been done, is receive community input. It's important, before you establish an office, to know exactly what its charge is. I think it's really interesting to hear Councilmember Tresseder propose an LGBTQIA facility, and Councilmember Martinez Franco propose a women's conference, and then to say, oh, this is what this office will do. Well, is it? Because this was already proposed. You guys are great. You're already looking at everything with a DEI lens. So the question is, if we're already doing it, what exactly is going to be their charge? So I do think that we need to have more exploration before we go ahead and establish it. We certainly don't want the office to be establishing itself. That's dangerous. So please, let's explore this a little more, and if you can please do the presentation tonight, I would appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Stacy?
Welcome.
Hi, hello. Without defined job descriptions, performance metrics, or cost-benefit analysis, the Office of Inclusive Excellence lacks any measurable accountability. In the DEI committee meeting, it was revealed that the funds being used for the DEI hire were COVID funds. Are we not concerned about a federal audit? Also, what happens in year two to this office? Does the city of Irvine allow you to create a department without budgetary guidelines? In the Thursday committee meeting, we heard that it could be a possible shift of employees into a position. If you have the availability to just assign this on as a project, then you don't need an office, assigned staff, because it already exists. How much would this position cost on a continuous basis? Would it be a managerial position and at least another person to support that position? You also have to take into account health benefits, vacation, and sick time. In your proposed city planning budget 2025 to 2027, on page 176, the city, quote, "The city hosted over 39 community events, highlighting military appreciation, diversity, equity, inclusion, seasonal programming, as well as city dedications, groundbreaking ceremonies, and commemorative milestones." Collectively, these events engaged more than- Collectively, these events engaged more than 92,000 attendees. This is telling me that we already have DEI baked into the city plan and its governance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is IR. IR, unmute your mic. Hello, can you hear us? Our next speaker is Mona. Mona, unmute your mic. Mona, can you hear us?
Okay, sorry, yeah, yeah, I can hear you now. I can hear you now. All right. There's one thing I wanted to make a correction, because I don't think Mayor was wrong. If you look at the agenda for 5.6, you would notice that it says it's a request by Councilmember Tressiter to create an LGBTQIA plus resource center. So he wasn't off by having a question about that. Secondly, about half of the people that spoke this evening that waited to speak are part of that peanut gallery of mean girls that laughed when my name was pronounced. So I don't believe they actually care about DEI in Irvine. I really don't. Because if they can single me out, they can single anybody else out. I have a voice and I use it. And there are a lot of people that will not go up against this crowd. They talk about not being transparent. They spent quite a bit of time trying to decide what the memo said, when in actuality, the memo did say, based on their memo that they put out, "Council direction directs staff to establish an Office of Inclusive Excellence and work with the DEI Committee to create an implementation timeline, including the study if needed." I think as a committee, a DEI committee should be able to reach out to the community if they are truly part of the large community. You can't be just a 10% of the community and pretending that there's no other communities. We talk a big game, but we're not doing the work. So yes, I...
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll try IR again. IR, unmute your mic.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. So I just want to point out, it's so ironic that for the previous two items, people said this is a great idea, no one objects to it, and then for this particular item, all these speakers that came out and talked use even the word danger. It's dangerous to have an Inclusive Excellence office. That kind of language itself is dangerous. To use the word dangerous, to consider and implement an office for inclusive excellence, it's not dangerous to do that. So I just want to make sure people are very aware that some of those people who talk, they say they're for DEI, they're not. Another thing I also want to point out is that not all the time, but I'd say a lot of the times, those commissioners are political appointees, and they are not there permanently. So we don't have a person that we could point to that will be there year and year after throughout, and who will be watching, you know, whatever programs and budgets are spent and however ways. That, no one's there to be accountable for that. So that's an issue. I also want to point out, this is the biggest well-known tactic of how they used to try to block equal housing and all this stuff. And this is the same tactic they used to use when they tried to block desegregating schools back in the days. And this is really disheartening. Why am I hearing this in my city? Right? This is, it's nothing new. We've seen this before. Refusal to act on systematic inequality. A classic example is the resistance to addressing racial or any other segregation and inequality in the mid...
Thank you. Your time is up. Our next speaker is George. George, unmute your mic. You have 90 seconds.
Thank you. Last November, there was a powerful reflection right there from the dais that spoke to the heart of Irvine's story. Now, I'm going to quote it now. Tell me if you can remember who among you said this, quote, "This city has come a long, long way. All you have to do is look at the census data. In the early years, this was 99, 95% Caucasian, as was most of Orange County, and over the years, with a sustained commitment, Irvine has progressed year after year after year to the point where it is," and this is a statistical fact, I'm still quoting, "that I want to stress, I want everybody in Irvine to understand, we are currently the most diverse and thoroughly integrated city in the United States of America. All you have to do is look at the census data." That's the end of the quote. So I thank you, Mayor Abraham, for saying that last November, because it eloquently acknowledges Irvine's remarkable transformation from a small, homogenous community into a vibrant, multicultural city that already stands as a model for the entire nation. It reminds us that long before the letters DEI were put together, as a result of intentional effort, thoughtful leadership, and a shared belief in fairness and opportunity, this city created a place where everyone can come together.
Thank you. Your time is up, and that is all, Mayor.
Thank you. I see that Councilmember Carol wishes to be recognized. I'll invite you to make comment now, Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think it sounds like our plan is to go back to the drawing board on this. And I just wanted to say, I think on behalf of all of us, thank you for the comments. Thank you for all the comments on all sides. Definitely some acrimony, and definitely some things being hurled one way and another. Just trying to think what would really add to this, to say, other than thank you for your comments, I got a report that I've read now 12 times from my DEI Committee member that I still don't understand. I'm going to be very honest. And not because he didn't get it, or maybe he did or not, I don't know. I have known Wendy Picota for over a decade. I know some of the other ladies up there. I know some of the other speakers. I like to listen. I think Mona can be very thoughtful and has a lot of great things to say, too. I think that everybody needs to take a breath, and let's just figure this out, which we'll be able to do. I don't think I'm disclosing some kind of like state secret here, ladies and gentlemen, but the city council votes on things that can be sometimes charged or political. For example, an entire majority of this body will be running for office, I believe, next year, sans me. So I'm probably the easiest person to say, I have no desire to do any of that. We pass things to score points for politics. I've done it. We also pass things that are amorphous and say, give it to staff and let them look at it, because it's easier to kick it down the road, because sometimes it comes back and sometimes it doesn't. Okay? We've kicked the Climate Action Plan down the road 17,000 times. Councilmember Tressiter brought it back. It was supposed to be brought back today. She took it off tonight. That's not just her, just we all do that. Okay? This is how it works. It probably would be better if we could all stand up and meet, you know, to that young man, what is it, Ruben? Excellent comments, Ruben. It probably would be better from a process perspective if we all stood up here and voted the way we should really vote on things. Okay? But we don't. And sometimes we vote for politics. So I'm not sure what happened. But I do know that we'll get to the bottom of it. And there is a possibility that we are being pitted against each other, that, let's call it, you all up there and some of the people on the phone are being pitted against each other because there was a staff error. That's correct. You're not going to get a lot of council members that are going to say the staff has a problem, or the staff this and that, but the staff are human beings, and there could be a possible error in there. So it's just up to us to figure out what that is, okay? And we need to have a definitive vote on a DEI office. We will have that vote. We'll have a debate, and we'll vote on it. I don't want to impugn anyone on this DEI Committee. It's not fair. I don't know who else. I've served for years as a planning commissioner. I've served for years as a Parks and Recreation Commissioner. I sometimes had no idea what Councilmember Mayor, now State Senator Choi, wanted me to do on the items. No idea. But we do the best we can. So obviously, something happened at that committee. I'm still trying to fumble through and figure out what it is. Other people are going to speak. I don't know what they're going to say. Listen to them, please. Have an open mind. This is obviously, you know, just an error of sorts, and it'll be worked out, and we'll figure it out. I am in no position... This conversation started, and I'm thinking to myself, I'm going to challenge my brand-new city manager, who I just hired, and say, what happened here? I'm not going to do that. The bigger person has to not do that. But I will ask him tomorrow morning. What happened? Why did Liliana say those things? How could we have an office that was supposed to come back to me that seemed to be sidestep? And then I also want to ask, is that true? Because there's always like six different aspects to this thing. It's multi-dimensional chess. We went from five to seven. It's gotten seven times more, thousand times more complicated. So all I ask is your patience and your kindness. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Carol. Councilmember Martinez-Franco, followed by Councilmember Tressiter, followed by Councilmember and Vice Mayor James Mai.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, everybody, for coming and talking and staying until the end, because I do believe in transparency. This is one of the things that I run for elected official. I wanted to hear you. But just to establish a record and just so establish the legality, I want to ask Mr. Melching the legality of the establishment of the office. I just want to establish a record so we don't question at least that part anymore.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Councilmember Martinez-Franco, the, I think you're asking what the motion was that was adopted by the council last November, November 2024. This motion was approved by the council. Direct staff to establish an Office of Inclusive Excellence and work with the DEI Committee to create an implementation timeline, including a study if needed, that includes recommended organizational structure, staffing plan, budget, and resource allocation, and key initiatives slash programs that are aligned to the adopted DEI resolution. Then there's a second part as well. Conduct community and stakeholder engagement, listening sessions that are including local DEI leaders, nonprofits, cultural organizations, businesses, community groups, and interfaith organizations. That was the motion that was approved on November 12th pursuant to the minutes that were approved by a city council a little later meeting.
So in other words, the office is approved. It just needs to be created.
Yes. The motion begins with direct staff to establish the Office of Inclusive Excellence, and then it goes on to explain a process that would be used to do that.
Thank you. And this is the reason I am postponing it to November.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez-Franco. Councilmember Tressiter.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate Councilmember Martinez-Franco bringing this forward. I, in general, am very supportive of DEI efforts. And I did vote to support this motion. And I remember the discussion from it, and I remember my reasoning. I can see why Councilmember Carol maybe doesn't remember, because it looks like, according to the minutes, he walked out during it. But I remember that the reason that I wanted to support it was because it was stipulated that the DEI Committee would help with this, help, you know, create an implementation timeline and all that. Even though I am very supportive of DEI efforts, I recognize I am not an expert, and I know that if we... I know it's possible to do DI in a way that can be inadvertently harmful to certain groups, and I don't want to do that. And I trust the DI Committee to have an independent point of view, and I really appreciate my committee appointee, Taryn Williams. And so I listened to her. And she also had some hesitations about this motion, but because the DI Committee would be involved, then she ended up recommending that I support it. So I would love to see the DEI Committee have a chance to weigh in on whatever the plan is, especially the, you know, timeline and implementation structure and all that. So that is my point of view. And I definitely would love to hear what the staff are thinking of and what they perhaps are planning on presenting, though I am flexible about the timing of that. I'm sure everybody could come back if they needed to. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tressiter. Councilmember Mai.
Thank you, Mayor. I am, I'm not going to talk about merits or procedure. I just want a plain English answer. One, two questions. One is, does this exist already? Has it been implemented? That's the first question.
Not yet. We're working on assigning a person to lead that office.
So it doesn't exist in the present stage?
Correct.
Second question is, I think you answered it. Has someone been identified to be underneath there? I mean, it's going to be somebody, right? I mean, but has somebody been identified?
So we are not looking to hire a new employee. We're looking to identify a person to lead the office.
Has that person been identified yet, or is that still ongoing?
It's ongoing.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Let me just say a couple of things, and then I think a motion to continue would be appropriate. I just want to say something about, you know, language we use, words we use. Look, confusion, which was referenced by a number of speakers, they're confused. There's obviously some confusion here at the dais, relationship to staff. Confusion is not the same thing as lack of transparency. Lack of transparency implies malintent to hide the ball. I don't think that's what's going on here, and I don't think we need to be hurling charges along those lines. I do think that the ball has been dropped a bit. We need to regroup, and a motion to continue would, I think, be very helpful in that regard. I do want to, I thank whoever called in who actually listened to something I said months ago. I do want to thank that person, because I think it is really important to remind ourselves of all the hard work that has been done in this city for more than 50 years, to the point that we are, again, as measured by the census, absolutely without a doubt, the most diverse and integrated city in the United States of America. I grew up in Los Angeles, very diverse city, but it was completely segregated. Schools were segregated, neighborhoods were segregated. That's not the Irvine experience. It's not the Irvine way. People here, I like to say, live in relative harmony. We live in relative harmony. That doesn't mean things are perfect. Obviously, problems exist here that need to be addressed. And how we do that, whether it's with an Office of Inclusive Excellence, or DEI initiating projects, or some combination of the two, I do take to heart some of the earlier testimony that was given as well, which says, look, we need hard evidence, hard data. I can tell you, I, over the years, have watched very carefully... I can tell you, I, over the years, have watched very carefully the reports that we get of hate incidents or hate crimes. And although the record isn't perfect, obviously, here in Irvine, it is remarkable what a low rate of hate incidents and hate crimes there are in the city of Irvine. Are there spikes at various times? Obvious things that are happening that need to be addressed, yes. But I want everybody to have confidence in everybody else that we will work this through together and continue to have this city be a leading force when it comes to diversity, equity, inclusion, building the kind of society that I think all of us want to see. So mindful of that, I would just suggest we continue this matter. I'll make a motion to continue the matter with the understanding that staff will begin to review the record here, and begin to put things together, and return to us as, as soon as is reasonably possible to readdress the subject.
Will do.
My second motion.
Thank you. Motion to continue is before us. Any discussion on that motion? There being none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carol.
Yes.
Councilmember Go.
Yes.
Councilmember Lou.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez-Franco.
Yes.
Councilmember Tresseder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai.
Yes.
And Mayor Agren.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
Thank you. That concludes our work for this evening. I don't think we have anything further, do we? All right. The agenda having been completed, we will adjourn till our next regular meeting. Also, also move adjournment with the clerk call the roll.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Carol.
Yes.
Councilmember Go.
Yes.
Councilmember Lou.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez-Franco.
Yes.
Councilmember Tresseder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mai.
Yes.
Mayor Agren.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.